Good evening, everyone. We're going to go ahead and get started. I'm going to call the meeting to order, and I see Amanda Smash Hyde is in the front row. Could you lead us in the pledge of allegiance tonight?
Oh, you don't need one.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We got the original version, I think. So we'll go ahead and have a roll call. Yvonne?
Yes.
Councilmember D'Amico. Councilmember, I'm sorry, Councilmember Horvath.
Here.
Councilmember Meister.
Here.
Vice, sorry. Mayor Protem Duran.
Here.
Mayor Heilman.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. The first item is to approve our agenda for today's special meeting and study session. Are there any changes to the agenda?
Motion to approve. Motion to adopt.
That we approve. Is there a second? Is there any objection? Hearing none, the agenda will be approved by the consensus of the council. We'll now turn to public comments on consent calendar items which have not been removed from the consent calendar. If you're here to speak on our study session topic, we'll have an opportunity for you to speak on the study session topic a little later in the meeting. And we do have a couple of public comments, general public comments, correct, Yvonne? They're, okay, they're not showing up on the screen. Marv Auerbach to be followed by, to be followed by Jean Dobrin. Marv? And you have two minutes.
Counsel, ladies and gentlemen, my name is Marvin Auerbach, 50-year resident of the city of West Hollywood, Vietnam veteran, belong to CES, and the public comments are a couple of them, one is concerning security in the library. I know I emailed through Beth, the city council members and the city manager today, there is no security in the library. When the sheriff is called because they're inundated with the situation with homeless and other crime situations, they don't always respond. It's not their fault. There needs to be full-time security in the West Hollywood library, seven days a week that they're open, from the time they open till the time they close. People who look like police officers without weapons. I had an incident last Friday where I live with a transient who I had recognized from the library, where I had never had any problems with him before. He threatened to shoot me later on when I chased him out of my building. I saw him here in the library. It continued. The manager of the library knew about him and said, "Marv, stay away." And we called the sheriff's department. He had been arrested a number of times. The other thing is, I'm very familiar with the sheriff's department, and I'm very supportive of them, of the captain, lieutenants, the cops team program. I'd like to see that expanded, and we need more deputies out in the field. My street, Alfred, is part LA and part West Hollywood. I live in the West Hollywood part. There needs to be more sheriff deputies in the city of West Hollywood. The transient situation, which is probably 85, 90, 90% of the problems, because I see it where I live, and I notice it as I travel around. So I appreciate if the city of West Hollywood, the city council can get together, who own the library, with the county, and do something, not only the security in the library, but having more sheriffs out in the field, 24/7. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Marv. Jean Dobrin, we'll bring the mic to you, Jean.
Jean Dobrin, a 40-year resident of West Hollywood. You know, my big thing these days is for us to get rid of Wells Fargo. Our contract with them, where they handle millions and millions of our dollars, is up on March 19, 2019. But I think we should get before that. We should follow what the city council of Los Angeles has just done. Mitchell Farrell has said, "It's time for us to endeavor to do business only with ethical financial institutions that might have high standards and ethical standards." And he also said that the city tax payers must have higher ethical standards than what Wells Fargo demonstrated the last couple of years. The city of Seattle has already divested themselves for those reasons, for two reasons, because they are lending the Dakota Access Pipeline, which is sending, which is trying to take away the property of the native Indians who were here before we were. They have already done that, and some other cities are getting ready to do that. You can just imagine what we found very, very persistent, consistent redlining, referring to practice of financial institution discriminating against certain area based on some levels. The city, Wells Fargo has agreed to pay $142 million to the people whose accounts they opened without their knowledge, which amount to 25 cents a person. That is not what we want. Our mayor, Protem, John Duran, says, "We should be careful about striking and hitting a liberal-leaning bank in a sanctuary city." Bless him, he is always thinking of people who are gay and lesbian. I appreciate that very much, but this is not a reason to keep Wells Fargo. Thank you.
Thank you. Your time is up. Thank you. We'll now turn to any brief council member comments.
I just have an adjournment motion. Heidi Schroeder passed away June 24. She lived on Sweetser. She was a West Hollywood resident for a number of years, a local artist, and worked at Tower Classical Records years ago, and she also served on our Women's Advisory Board, so I'd like to adjourn in her memory.
Absolutely. Any other?
I'd just like two things. First, to note my no vote on item 2D, and I think it's safe to say on behalf of the women of this council that we welcome women in sleeveless dresses to our council chambers, even though our Congress does not.
I didn't hear that, but, oh, sleeveless dresses, okay. Yvonne, can you also note my no vote on 2D? Other council comments tonight? Okay, so that then brings us to the city manager's report. Paul, any report tonight?
I just wanted to make a brief comment regarding the security concerns at the library. There is a meeting that's being held tomorrow between social service staff, public safety, and economic development and facilities, and this is one of the top issues that they'll be discussing, is security in the library. So just a quick update, and we'll get a report back to the council soon.
Can we ask the staff to look at the sound in here tonight? I'm having a little trouble hearing, and I think some of the people in the audience are also having a little trouble, so if we could possibly adjust the sound a bit. Maybe it's set up for the group downstairs. Okay. All right, so that brings us, Mayor Protem?
I'm just getting ready to move the fiscal camera.
All right, now we're on to the consent calendar, a series of routine items that we approved with a single motion. Yvonne, what is the fiscal impact on the consent calendar tonight?
The fiscal impact for tonight is $1,000 in expenditures, $0 in potential revenue, and $0 in waive fees.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye, or pressing your button, sorry. The consent calendar is approved. We are now going to convene to a study session. We're going to move down to the lower level here, and if everyone could move their belongings down. us tonight. And our city attorney, one of our city attorneys, Lauren Langer, has been working on this issue, and she is going to lead our discussion tonight. Lauren?
Excuse me, excuse me. Lauren, one second. Mayor, can you let people know that there are, I think, public safety commissioners, planning commissioners, and business license commissioners here? I think they're all here, and maybe you want to wave your hand up in the air so we can all see who managed to make it?
Thank you for that, yes. We do have a number of business license commissioners. I see a planning commissioner or two, and some public safety commissioners. Thank you all for joining us tonight. A transportation commissioner is here as well, Women's Advisory Board. We have a lot of interest in this topic, so thank you very much for being here tonight.
... discussion tonight. For those of you that don't know me, I'm Lauren Langer, the Assistant City Attorney, and I'll be moderating the panel tonight. Before we start, I just want to explain the format to the public. It's up on a slide behind you. We're going to do introductions, an introduction to the topic area, a legislative update. Then we're going to have a panel discussion with questions and answers of some experts that we brought in to talk about different items. Then we will have a question and answer session where the city council members can ask any follow-up questions that they have of the panelists while they're here, if all of your questions aren't answered during the question and answer. We will provide an opportunity for public comment after that, so the public can speak to the council and give their opinions or whatever else they have to say. And then at the end of the study session, we will go back to the city council for some comments, possibly direction to staff, if you feel ready for that. We'll see where the discussion goes. So, let's start with number one, our introduction and our cannabis legislative update. Let's talk about why we're here, first of all. As most people in this room know, medical marijuana has been a very important value, and access to medical marijuana has been an important value in West Hollywood for many, many years. But now we're faced with something different. With the passage of Proposition 64, all of a sudden, we're faced with an entirely different industry, and that's the recreational marijuana industry. So we want to learn from our panel tonight. We want to look through their crystal ball as they have had experience with this industry, to see what these uses look like, how they operate, what this city can expect when recreational marijuana businesses come to West Hollywood, so that this city can adopt the best and most appropriate regulations for West Hollywood. We're really going to focus tonight on land use and business regulations and those topics, so we can come up with a framework of regulation, and once we have that framework to work with, there's countless other topics that we'll probably delve into at other council meetings, but this will be our first step tonight. So before we get into our panel discussion with the experts, we just wanted to provide a little background of Prop 64 and a legislative update, so everyone in the room has the same information and knows what we're talking about, because we're really going to get into some specifics with the panel. On November 8, the voters passed the Prop 64, which is the Control, Regulate, and Tax Adult Use of Marijuana Act. We call it the AUMA. And what it did was it said that adults 21 years of age or older can legally grow, possess, and use cannabis for non-medicinal purposes with certain restrictions. And then, beginning on January 1, 2018, about six months from now, the AUMA is going to make it legal to sell and distribute cannabis through regulated businesses. It also contains provisions for local regulation and taxation of these commercial marijuana activities and outdoor cultivation. So as of November 19, 2016, adults 21 years of age or older are allowed to smoke or ingest marijuana or marijuana products, subject to local restrictions, such as where smoking is allowed, away from schools and daycares, things of that nature. Adults are allowed to possess, process, transport, purchase, obtain, or give away marijuana to other adults, and they're allowed to plant, cultivate, harvest, or process up to six living plants inside their home, subject to reasonable local regulations. So under the AUMA, cities retain authority to regulate and ban all cultivation and recreational marijuana businesses. So that's what we're here to talk about tonight, about this new industry. What do we need to include in our ordinances? What activities are not appropriate in the city of West Hollywood in our different zones, and to really explore these topics. All of these businesses are going to be subject to state taxation, and they're going to require a state and, in some cases, a local license. So let's talk about how we can best select operators and where these types of businesses should go. So the state is going to be licensing all of these activities, and it's going to be broken down into three agencies. The Department of Consumer Affairs will license transportation, storage, distribution, and sale of marijuana. The Department of Food and Agriculture will issue marijuana cultivation licenses, and then the Department of Public Health will issue licenses for manufacturers and testing laboratories. So all of those agencies right now are working on their regulations, and it is a crunch, because they want to have them in place by January 1, so they can begin issuing their licenses for all these activities. At the same time, all of the California cities also want to be putting into place the local regulations, so that these businesses have to get both their state licenses and comply with any local restrictions before they start operating come January 1. So the first step is to learn about all these businesses and have a conversation on the best land use and business regulations. Allison Regan is going to provide you a very short update on some legislative updates since the adoption of the AUMA last November.
Thank you. Just want to mention briefly, three bills. The first is the trailer bill that the governor just signed, which consolidates the administration of the Compassionate Use Act, which we know is the medical marijuana statute, as well as the new adult use statute. So they're creating a Bureau of Cannabis Control to administer all of these various provisions. They did make some substantive changes to both the medical marijuana statute and the adult use, which we're tracking to see how that affects what we're doing. In addition to that, there was a bill, there's a bill moving through the Assembly which would prohibit state and local agencies from assisting a federal agency with the enforcement of federal laws regarding cannabis activities. The city of West Hollywood has already taken a position in support of that. I wanted to update you and let you know that the League of Cities, along with the California Police Chiefs Association, has taken a position opposing that bill, and some of the reasons they give are they're concerned about impeding investigations of activities that would violate both state and federal law, which might have, which might relate to cannabis activities, but involve money laundering, for example, or sales to minors, or trafficking of other illegal substances besides marijuana. So those were their concerns. Finally, the last bill I wanted to mention was AB 64, which is Assemblymember Bonta's bill. That deals with licensing activities. The League of Cities is tracking this bill. They're working with Bonta to refine the definition of deliverables. That's still kind of in flux. And then also, they, this bill eliminates the restrictions on advertising, which I think the League of Cities would like to include some reasonable time, place, and manner restrictions in this bill. Thank you.
So I'm John Leonard with the City's Finance Department. I just wanted to speak briefly about taxation. As Lauren said, taxation wasn't, isn't one of the key topics we're going to be discussing tonight. Those are land use and business regulations, but we wanted to let the council know that we continue to study and analyze taxation of cannabis within the city. However, because the first opportunity you would have to place a measure on our local ballot would be March 2019, it's not something we're focused on right at this moment, since there are more pressing issues for regulations that need to be put in place by the end of this year. But we will be bringing items forward to the council at a later date regarding taxation. Thank you.
Okay, great. Let's get started. The first thing I wanted to do is allow the panelists an opportunity to introduce themselves, to take a minute or so and tell everyone who you are, where you're from, and a little bit about your expertise. Amanda, do you want to start?
All right, looks like it's on. I'm Amanda Ostrowitz. I'm the founder of Canoreggs. We are a platform that aggregates all these state and county laws pertaining to cannabis, so we've seen every little aspect of it, started in Colorado. We've been through Nevada's legalization, Florida. We've been tracking in every single of the 539 localities here in California. And prior to starting all this, I am an attorney as well, so big regulatory nerd here.
Sorry, are we from the state of Colorado? Is that where we reside and doing the work?
That is where my address is. I spend about 65% of my time in California.
I'm Ginny Sawyer. I'm a policy and project manager for the city of Fort Collins. We've had medical marijuana since 2010, 2011, and then with the pass of our Amendment 64 in November 2012, we have started licensing retail or adult-use marijuana as well.
My name is Trent Woolavec. I am the president of TGS National. We are an operator in the state of Colorado. We currently have 13 stores. We also cultivate and manufacture. We also cultivate and manufacture cannabis. And we are also in five other states and the country of Canada. So, we are able to really be the operator here within the space.
Hello, my name is Kat Packer. I'm a policy coordinator with the Drug Policy Alliance. The Drug Policy Alliance is a national organization that focuses on really the intersection of drug policy and social justice issues. Here specifically in California, we co-authored and co-sponsored the Adult Use of Marijuana Act and also ran a campaign in support of the Adult Use of Marijuana Act under the banner of Californians for Responsible Marijuana Reform. And during that campaign, I got to serve as the campaign coordinator. Most recently, we have been focused on the implementation of the Adult Use of Marijuana Act, as that has unfolded and changed. And I'm working currently with the County of Los Angeles and the City of Los Angeles to put forth responsible and equitable policies. Thank you.
Great. Okay, well, it looks like our fifth panelist may be held up a little bit, but I think we're just going to proceed. I'm going to direct most questions to the entire group. Occasionally, I might ask one particular individual, but please feel free to jump in and all contribute to the answers to these questions. So, we're going to begin talking about sales and sales of cannabis. So, based on your experience, have municipalities generally limited the number of locations where cannabis sales can occur, or have they allowed an unlimited amount?
Ms. Langer, I'm sorry, a process question. If we have questions as the evening unfolds, do we interrupt as we go or just keep a list of questions?
If you could keep a list of questions till the end, because they may come up, the answers may come up through the dialogue. Thank you.
I can definitely address that. So, there's a few different ways that we've seen them limiting the concentration of dispensaries. I kind of break it myself into a few categories. I talk about caps, zoning limitations, and distance in between requirements. And there's kind of even the zoning and caps combination. So, the way I've seen it work quite a bit is sometimes there's just a pure cap on the number there can be. Like, San Jose has 16 collectives. Hollister has a two-dispensary max. And, but then, they set, you know, their ordinance, they set that by ordinance, but place a cap on the rest, the rest can be capped by resolution. So, sometimes by ordinance, some by resolution. California City sets distinct caps as well. Those are just some examples. Arcata is an example where they did this via zoning. They created the Marijuana Innovation Zone, and they made a very specific part of the town that had kind of a lot of blight and where they thought it'd be safe for these certain activities. There's several places that have done that. Then, there's kind of the combination of the two. So, like Aurora, Colorado, they broke the city into eight segments and allow for three in each one. So, that's a combination where you're zoning it and capping it per. And then, I've seen a lot of distance requirements between. So, like in Denver, there's, you know, there's 1,000 feet from each storefront, but they placed that after they got really concentrated and grandfathered in the existing ones before that. In Santa Ana, there's a 500-foot distance requirement between centers. So, there's a kind of the way I break down how they have dealt with that. There are some that have just let it be free market and the free market dictates.
Fort Collins has done both a cap and zone-type approach, so we are limited. One thing that did happen by a result of basing it on zone, we have gotten concentrations in particularly near areas that have yet to be annexed. So, at some point, we're going to annex these, and sort of the gateway into our community might have a small concentration. Not everyone likes that. A lot of businesses got pushed, both on the north end and the south end of our main street through town. So, that was sort of an unintended consequence, but we've mitigated that through some other regulations with advertising and signage and some of those sorts of things. But we do have a cap as well. And that cap was written in actually by a citizen-initiated vote, and they limited it to one store per every 500 patients registered in the county. And that was done for medical, and we tagged on to that for our adult use.
Excuse me, Lauren, I don't mean to interrupt, but are you an elected official or an appointed official? You said you're an employee of the city of Fort Collins. Thank you.
So, for municipalities with existing medical cannabis locations like West Hollywood, have you seen cities give existing medical businesses priority for new recreational licenses?
So, go ahead. So, yes, we've seen that. That was how it was done in Denver. But we've also seen, as the adult-use market has picked up, we've seen certain states that may have placed a moratorium on the adult-use aspect, actually go through with a merit-based application. So, putting forth an application with a scoring rubric to make sure that they get the right individuals into the city. So, yes, we've seen medical take precedent, but we've also seen a lot of the cities, counties, municipalities that place a moratorium, give additional licenses just based on demand and being able to, you know, meet that.
Do you think one of those approaches worked best?
My belief is that the patient, when there is a medical dispensary, should become, you know, first and foremost. So, yes, I believe you get much better operators with a merit-based application, and we've seen that be successful, not only in Colorado, but other states such as Nevada, Oregon, Florida, where we've seen a merit-based application with prior business experience being one of the requirements.
Okay. Amanda touched briefly on some cities that allow unlimited amount of retail locations. And when that's occurred, have those cities seen an over-concentration, or does the market eventually work itself out, where the market can only handle so many businesses in a city?
I think that becomes a real estate issue as much as anything. I think you will see an influx until real estate is not available. Would you agree?
Yeah, absolutely. And we've seen, you know, cannabis in a free market in Denver, where it absolutely does become heavily populated with stores. From, you know, policy perspective, a lot of the media or the perception in the public is they don't want a dispensary on every corner. So, that's really kind of been the issue, or what has been played up when there hasn't been a restriction, which, you know, being a responsible individual within the industry, that's not something that, you know, we like to have to deal with. So, yes, we've seen overpopulation, but it will work itself out with businesses going under.
Okay. Let's talk for a second about selecting retail operators. If the city created a system of pre-qualifying retail operators through an application and a background check process, and then conducted a random selection of, a random selection process of those pre-qualified operators, do you think that process would produce a better pool of operators compared to just issuing licenses on a first-come, first-served basis?
Regardless of whether it would create a better pool, it's going to create lawsuits. Everywhere we see a lottery, we see lawsuits, and you don't always end up with the most qualified applicants. So, we're, you know, before you were talking about priority review, like, that's something like Long Beach has done that. You can watch and see how the outcome is there. But when you're talking about actually merit-based versus lottery, we're seeing a lot less litigation with merit-based, and we're seeing those places able to onboard much more quickly. And when the city here is dealing with a deadline like January 1 of 2018, the risk of litigation and the kind of things that could put on hold and what that would do for getting state licenses in a timely manner could be quite prohibitive.
What do you mean when you say merit-based? Merit-based versus lottery?
A rubric. This is the number of points that each section is worth. You apply, and whoever have the highest scores get them. But now, granted, in places we've seen, you know, I think generally, they do that in two rounds. Often, in a place where there's pre-existing medical businesses in good standing, they'll tend to do something with a merit-based on those, and then, it's when there's additional room open, when a whole new market is opening up, then we tend to see the whole thing is merit-based at once. So, there's a combination of the priority review and merit.
So, what types of questions are being asked to get that weighted number?
Well, it depends on the priorities of the city. It's what you guys find to be the most important things for your city. Is the security requirement the most important thing? Is the diversity plan, is, you know, is there development? It's, every city's priorities are different. That would not be for me to state. That's how you guys weigh it, but there's a lot of examples out there. I would turn and ask what you guys thought.
We gave priority and actually limited it to our medical dispensaries first. We actually said to have a retail license, you must first have a medical. And there were a lot of reasons behind that, but it's been fairly successful. And so, then, it's strictly in that application procedure of getting through the application and those requirements, which absolutely require security plans and background checks. And Trent could probably talk to the litany of hoops you got to go through on that better than I.
I think to that end, a lot of the things that you're going to see and that you would want to capture in a merit-based application are going to be designated by the state now. So, there are mandated state requirements that are going to require folks to have a mapping of what their different businesses look like, your security plan. But as West Hollywood is considering what it wants to be merit in terms of new cannabis businesses and having those businesses come onboard, I think it makes sense to take a moment and pause and recognize that this truly is a shift in policy. On one hand, going from complete prohibition to allowing medical businesses to exist in the city, to having adult use. And I think that there's going to be a lot of interest in owning a business, and so, whatever that process is that operators or applicants are going to have to go through, I think it needs to be fair. I think it needs to be equitable. I think that in terms of prioritizing existing operators, that's a discussion where folks might want to consider allowing priority for that specific license type that they're looking for, but maybe not allowing that specific business to just go after the entire, oh, I have a retail business, but I also would like to get a testing lab, and I'd also like to get a manufacturing, and so, I want all of that to happen while I'm in the same process of applying. So, in order to allow the market to be open, I think that that's something that West Hollywood would want to consider as well.
Yeah, and to speak a little bit more about one of the challenges that I've seen from time to time, Clark County is a great example of this in Nevada, where the city or the county did their own merit-based application, along with the state had their own merit-based application. And we saw actually the couple of the individual entities that was awarded the state, the city license or the county license actually not qualify through the state. And so, vice versa, there were some that got it at the state level and didn't get it at the local level. So, just one of the pitfalls that we've seen when a city, county, municipality does it separate than the state as well or prior to the state as well. So, that's been one of the challenges we've seen. But as far as a merit-based application, we've done this hundreds and hundreds of time. It really needs to speak towards, and I gave an example to Jerry and John around what we've seen in other applications in other states and other counties as well.
Thank you. Have any of the cities that you're familiar with experienced negative secondary impacts around retail locations such as crime, and to what extent?
There was actually a study that just got released in the Harvard Business Review Journal that showed that when dispensaries close, when retail dispensaries close, there's actually an increase of crime, because there's this unintended consequences of having foot traffic associated with retail establishments. So, you have these tertiary surveillance opportunities when you have folks coming in and out of retail dispensaries. So, they showed that when there were mass closures of retail operations, that crime actually increased, because there were less folks in that area to patrol and report back to safety officers.
We have seen, and I'm not going to have exact numbers, it's not a lot. Some of our stores have had break-ins occur, but thankfully, those security requirements that they're made to do with lock safes and security cameras have made solving those happen pretty quickly.
And we have experience with that here with our medical marijuana program, that we have security requirements in place for those operations. Are there any other steps that have been taken to correct negative impacts in any of the cities where you operate?
Yeah, so, what we actually do are required in Aurora, for example, one of the cities that we operate in Colorado. We do a full inspection and walkthrough with both police and fire prior to. The city of Lakewood is also another strong example of a city that takes preventative measures to reduce crime, both around the retail facility, but also prior to opening. So, we've seen minimal break-ins attempts. Nobody's ever actually gotten into our stores. So, it's something that has actually allowed a lot of gentrification around the areas that we've come into. Therefore, a lot of the money that the city and the state has received and other businesses, seeing that there's a dispensary there, actually pours money into the local area because of that, and then actually reduces crime we've seen in our retail locations.
And even just take like pure crime out of it. One thing we've seen in places where they, you know, allow and permit locally, what they're really able to crack down on is the illegal cultivation, the illegal dispensaries, the stuff that's their true thing that, you know, the COOMO is trying to prevent. And so, once they've identified who the legal operators are and have permitted them, the crackdown of the illegal operators is pretty simple, actually. And so, that's what we've seen a lot of, and you don't get pushback from the industry. So, like in Denver, at least twice a year, they coordinate with the DA, the Colorado AG, and the DEA, and they do coordinated busts, and they knock on basically, you know, 12 different doors all at once at the exact same time, and they end up with about 40 arrests each time, and they break up some really big criminal rings. And, you know, I know there's several cities we've spoken to that that's, you know, they're just excited to get through the permitting, so that they can then go knock on all the illegal ones.
Great. Okay, I'm going to call this a crystal ball question, so you can help us understand what's coming. Tell us about the various types of cannabis products that we can expect in these stores, both products that produce a high, and I understand there are products that don't produce a high but derive from cannabis. So, maybe Trent, maybe you're the one to start off on this one, if you could tell us a little bit.
Sure. So, we cultivate flour, and then, we also have manufacturing processing facility where we produce over 225 different SKUs. So, anything ranging from tincture to a popsicle to a cookie, we are producing. We also have gummies, lozenges, so on and so forth. So, the state has done a great job with the industry in being able to identify both packaging around child-resistant, opaque, but also labeling of the product with a THC exclamation point that is not only on all of our packaging, but on also all of our products. And so, in Colorado, everything is required to be in a 10-milligram serving, and packaging cannot, there cannot be over 10 or 100 milligrams in a single package. So, as far as infused products go, concentrates, so on and so forth, the industry is in a very nascent stage. And so, there are new products that are coming online pretty much on a daily basis. We're now able to separate out individual cannabinoids and look at and understand, you know, what their true value is, so people are able to, you know, leverage the plant in ways that maybe hadn't been able to be done before. So, it's a continued education, and there are a lot of... So it's a continued education, and there are a lot of additional requirements that are placed. But as we've kind of continued to grow, we've learned and have been able to ensure public safety with these new products because we're licensed producers.
What about some of the other products that, like body products? We've heard about chapsticks and creams. Can you just tell us a little about what those are?
Sure. So topicals, we produce, I believe, about 12 different products, anything from a lotion to a massage oil. We have bath bombs, we have lip balm, we have salves. So the great thing about a topical is it doesn't actually break the blood barrier, so there's no stimulation or, you know, mental effect. Your skin is actually your largest organ in your body, and there's a lot of CB2 receptors. And so the combination of CBD with THC, THC opening the CB2 receptors and CBD, what we found anecdotally unfortunately at this time, actually has reduced pain effects, tremors, so on and so forth. And so there is a great benefit to individuals that are looking for, you know, pain relief and suffering that, you know, again, we continue to learn and grow and do new products on a daily basis. We also have ancillary products, so accessories, so on and so forth. So quite a wider range of products.
Okay, now at all-
Lauren, I think we've been joined by our last panelist who probably fought her way through traffic to get here, so thank you for joining us. If you wouldn't mind introducing yourself, and then we'll go back to the questions.
Sure. Thank you very much. My apologies for being late. Yes, the traffic was not that well expected. Julia Silva, I'm an attorney for over 30 years now in public law. Started off as a councilwoman, actually. City of Hawaiian Gardens, served a four-year term, and then went to law school. I wanted to seek reelection, but the dean said either you seek reelection or stay here at Loyola Law School. So I think I made the right choice. And have been practicing public law, representing planning commission meetings, and all of a sudden, I'm now doing a lot of cannabis law, drafting the ordinances and the policies and procedures and the permit applications. And because I am a solo practitioner, I also do a little bit of private sector clients. I represent a couple of applicants. Thank you.
Thank you for joining the rest of our esteemed panel tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Julia. At the retail stores, are most of the stores that are licensed all cannabis products? Or do they have a variety of non-cannabis products too? Like, do you have a t-shirt store that also sells cannabis products? Or is it primarily focused on the cannabis products?
Yeah, so we are able to sell accessories and t-shirts, but nothing else. So if you're a cannabis license holder, a privileged license holder, it can only be cannabis or some sort of product derived from cannabis. So we can't even sell water, for example.
That's under Colorado law?
That is Colorado.
It's no consumable non-cannabis products. So you can sell t-shirts, but nothing that could be consumed like a soda, a bag of chips, a pack of gum.
Okay. Did you have something you wanna add? Okay. What'd you say? Does anyone know why Colorado's law is written that way?
'Cause we went first. I don't, this is a full ventured guess, but it was really, anytime something's new and unknown, it's gonna be overregulated virtually. And so I think they really wanted to ensure that only people going in for cannabis products, you weren't stopping in to pick up a soda and then being like, oh, hey, what's here? So that's my best guess.
And Kat can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe the AUMA, the only restriction is you can't sell cannabis where they're also licensed to sell alcohol.
There have been some changes. It's also tobacco.
Tobacco, okay.
And there are current bills in the legislature that are trying to ban the sale of other products alongside cannabis products. So there's a whole conversation that's going on right now about different branded apparel items and whether or not you'd be able to sell a hat or a shirt with a name-brand cannabis product at the same place that you sold that. A lot of those conversations are still ongoing. A lot of this is still ongoing, so stay tuned.
Do you envision it going towards the way of Colorado, or it's just unclear at this point?
I think that it's gonna depend on the advocacy of a lot of the people who are in this room. I think that part of what we're trying to do in this conversation is move away from the reefer madness conversations and allow folks to understand that we can have adult professional conversations about cannabis. And so I do hope that we are moving towards regulation and away from prohibition.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so another question about sales, the question of the day. Are all transactions still in cash? Can a cannabis business accept credit cards? And before you answer, I just wanna read the headline from an article that was in LA Times yesterday, which says, "Why Some Pot Businesses Hide Their Cash and Others Truck It Straight Into a Federal Vault." "The world of cannabis banking is so full of contradictions that one business can truck money to a federal facility while the others are left to play a high-stakes game of hide-and-seek with its cash. It's the early stages of the Wild West," said John Chang, California treasurer, who is leading an effort to reform cannabis banking, a problem dating back to 1996 when California legalized medical marijuana. So who wants to tell us whether these stores can transact in cash or credit cards?
So we are fully banked. We have been fully banked since we started operations in 2010. We still do take transactions in cash. We can also actually take transactions with debit cards as well through a cashless ATM transaction. There are people out there that are claiming to be able to do credit cards. There's actually no cannabis identifier for these third-party processors. So they come up with creative ways. We've taken credit cards and we've lost that service about three different times, and we've also lost some capital as well because it gets tied up when they do realize, the processors do realize that it is a cannabis transaction. So yes, it's cash, but we do have a banking relationship that we can deposit cash, not only in Colorado, but in Florida, in Illinois, in Nevada, and in Oregon, also in Canada. There are banks that do do that.
Okay, thank you. Let's move on to distribution. Can you tell us a little bit how delivery services operate and how you would envision they would operate? And what types of regulations you've seen on delivery?
They don't in Colorado.
Oh, they don't, okay.
No. All, sales have to occur at the licensed premises. I don't know if it's very good for Colorado, 'cause there's a lot of patients that can't get to their medicine. But Colorado, there is none. But we have seen some stuff around California where they are doing things, you know, they can choose, when it comes to delivery in California, you can't prohibit a driver from going through your city, but you can determine whether or not it can begin and terminate in your city. And so some people just do delivery only, some are allowed to start there. So I think La Quinta actually allowed for it recently. Emeryville does it, and you have to basically, in most of these places, you have to get a business license to terminate a delivery in that city so that you're paying taxes there. And then they do, several do background checks on the delivery drivers. But then, you know, there's a whole range. And it's also a brand-new animal because what the trailer bill just did was really change things up quite a bit. You know, there used to be no standalone delivery that was going to be allowed under the MCRSA or the Adult Use of Marijuana Act. So it's to be determined what the state puts out in the state regulations is unknown.
And just so folks are aware of what's kind of going on in a neighboring city, and LA has been struggling with the ability to determine whether or not it's going to allow for delivery or not allow for delivery, but in its current iteration of its draft regulations that it has, it is allowing for delivery. They're requiring folks to be at least 21 to deliver. There's a restriction on the amount of cash or the amount of cash that someone is able to carry, as well as the value amount of the amount of property of cannabis product that folks are carrying. They're not allowing folks to consume cannabis while they're on their deliveries, which I think is the responsible decision to make. They're requiring all of these vehicles to be tracked via GPS and for there to be alarm systems on these vehicles. Every delivery employee is gonna have to wear a identification card that says which business they belong to. They have to keep receipts on hand and track the orders, and they're not able to make other stops, that delivery driver is not able to make other stops. So from business to delivery location to delivery location and then back to home business. Also of note, they are allowing delivery services that do not have storefront traffic. So you can have a brick-and-mortar location that is not open to the public, but that does delivery from that location.
So we have one of seven licenses in Florida, and there we do home delivery from our facility there. The requirement is obviously those deliveries are through the licensee down there. Requirements are, they have a manifest, everything is tracked and approved for the patient prior to them ordering, and then reconfirmed when they arrive. There needs to be at least two, sometimes three individuals that are in, excuse me, in the vehicle at all times. Two must stay with the vehicle, and then there would be one individual making the delivery to the patient, confirming, again, their identity, and then receiving and doing the transaction. Also in Oregon, they do allow delivery within the city or county that you are, have a license in, and you cannot go outside of the district there. So delivery from the actual licensed premise to an individual.
Thank you. Let's talk about consumption for a second. What types of consumption regulations have you seen in the various cities that you're all familiar with?
I've seen a few different things. So Denver's doing something a little different. They have a pilot program for social consumption that was voted in by the voters in November. They've just finally put out their final regs for that, but that's separate and apart. That is not related to dispensaries. In fact, you cannot sell anything at those places. Initially, the concept was people wanted to be able to have a place where they could go with their friends who like to drink and they could consume, but then the state passed a law blocking that that said anyone with a liquor license could not have one of these social consumption clubs. So how it's all gonna shake out will be interesting. It's probably gonna look more like yoga studios, coffee shops. Alaska has allowed for some onsite consumption at dispensaries. The only place I've seen it, though, like specifically around here is actually in Oakland. They've issued a few very special ones, like Magnolia is in Oakland, and they have a permit. It's in the same building, but it's not in the dispensary area. So it's like a contiguous area in the same building. It's still got certain, you know, restrictions around it, but, you know, Oakland's, you know, a leader on a lot of different things. So that's what I've seen.
We have certainly done no public or open consumption at all. On your private property, yes. Consequence of that, our short-term rental market, Airbnb, so now you're seeing particularly catering to tourists, since we had this prior to others, sort of catering to that market.
Here in the state of California now, as the trailer bill has developed, we are going to allow for statewide onsite consumption. It has to take place either at licensed retail location or a micro business, licensed micro business. The specific provisions require that the access area where consumption is going to be allowed is restricted to individuals 21 years of age or older. And that's important because we still do have an age group, 18 to 20, who could be medical patients, but this doesn't specifically apply to these individuals. So there's gonna have to be a separate conversation of if there are 18- to 20-year-olds who are medical patients, true medical patients, that they have a spot where they can consume responsibly and safely. And I think that it's going to be important for local jurisdictions to take onsite consumption, public consumption, seriously, because in other jurisdictions that don't have these places, there has been a true influx of infractions handed out towards people for public consumption. If consumers and patients don't have a place to consume, they're gonna do it outside. So if you don't want them consuming outside, I think it makes sense to give them a space where they can consume responsibly. There could be a parent who wants to consume and they don't wanna consume in front of their child. That parent deserves a place that they can go to consume, and this public consumption enforcement really disproportionately impacts low-income communities, homeless populations who are always gonna be public. And so I do think that local jurisdictions should have a robust conversation about what responsible onsite consumption looks like. Maybe that means that you only have onsite consumption in places where there's a certification program where the folks who are gonna be dispensing marijuana know about the cannabis, where there are restrictions on the amount that you can pass along to someone. And that might look different because traditionally, when we think about consumption, we're thinking about vaping and smoking. But consumption could be a massage if we're talking about topicals. And so I do think that there does need to be a robust conversation about it, and depending on how it's enforced, it truly can be a social justice issue.
Well, that brings up an interesting point. We were gonna ask about onsite consumption lounges and whether you think it's an important part of the cannabis economy. But I guess a follow-up question to that is, does that mean onsite consumption lounges are not just for smoking? We would envision onsite consumption lounges for all types of cannabis products?
I mean, I believe so. I've heard entrepreneurs talk about having yoga studios, having massage salons, having places where, you know, you might be a chocolatier and all you have is boxes of chocolate, then you might want to allow a space for folks to consume. So I think it makes sense to have a robust conversation, but also not to overregulate because there are entrepreneurs who are being very creative in this space. And I think that this is an opportunity to allow for, because I think that there are some local jurisdictions, and I resonate with their struggling with this, because on one hand, if we don't have a similar conversation about what responsible DYD laws look like, then essentially, police officers can just hang out wherever your onsite consumption place is and give folks a bunch of tickets. So I think that those two conversations have to happen simultaneously. Otherwise, you're gonna have consumers who are disproportionately impacted by these laws.
Do most cities mirror their consumption regulations after their tobacco regulations? I know there's some concern from individuals that don't wanna be exposed to secondhand smoke when they're out. So is that something that some of you have seen, to have their tobacco-smoking regulations mirror their cannabis smoking?
I mean, you could say ours do, 'cause we don't allow tobacco smoking anywhere. Actually, not on any city property, not in our downtown area, not in bars. So we did mirror that when we did our rules.
I'd say most places, it's like far stricter for cannabis than cigarettes. Denver, you can smoke a cigarette outside anywhere. You cannot just openly consume cannabis outside in Denver. So it's not, the smoking areas are not for cannabis at all. And even in their draft regulations for the social consumption, it's gotta be out of sight from the public, out of sight from anyone under 21, ventilation system, all sorts of stuff. So it's far stricter, except in cities where there's no smoking at all, which, different story.
Okay. Let's shift gears to manufacturing, testing, and cultivation. Just for the panelist's perspective, as you answer this question, or these questions, West Hollywood is a small city. We're less than two square miles. We're very urban, very dense, we have high land values, and our zoning doesn't currently allow for large-scale manufacturing or large-scale agricultural or cultivation activities. So if the city were to change its zoning to allow, let's say, manufacturing, what type of manufacturing activities do you believe would occur in a dense urban city like West Hollywood? And what do these activities look like? For example, THC extraction or things of that nature. Should we expect those activities? What do they look like? What do they look like?
Yeah, this one is, you know, a general market. I don't think you'll see manufacturing or cultivation, if you were to change zoning, come into the city. There's plenty of money that's flowing into California in very large-scale cultivation and manufacturing. I don't feel like the business economics would make sense if they were to do it in a dense, high-rent area. If there was, you know, manufacturing would probably be the one that actually would possibly come. And that, you're looking at extraction, so there's different types of extraction methods. So, one being hydrocarbon, so use of propane, butane, so on and so forth. There's also CO2, there's water, there's dry, there's ethanol. So there are many different types of extraction when you're looking to extract the plant. So it would be very challenging, and I don't think it would be something that would come to the area.
I don't know if I'd necessarily agree. Would it make sense everywhere? No, but you'd be amazed how many warehouses I've been into in San Francisco where real estate's through the roof, that you're shocked it's a cultivation and not been turned into lofts. So if there's existing property owners here who would fit that zoning, I wouldn't be shocked if they came in and did it. I agree, they'd probably opt for manufacturing, because you can make more money per square foot. And I'd say you'd want to keep it either solventless or closed-loop extraction, for, you know, safety reasons, but closed-loop, whether volatile or non, is generally the safest thing. I mean-
Just decode what you just said, real quickly.
So, the state has defined volatile extraction and non-volatile, and they allow both, because in a closed-loop system-
What does that mean?
Do you want to go? You could better explain closed-loop.
So it just, closed-loop system, it means with the solvent that you're using, whether it's hydrocarbon or CO2, it doesn't actually ever leave the process of extraction, whether that's from getting it through, extracting the plant, and then it's actually recaptured. So nothing is let out into the atmosphere.
You're reducing the chance of explosions, basically.
Thank you.
When you hear about these cannabis labs exploding, it's people that are doing like this open blasting, and that's something you never want. But these things can all be done in a safe environment, and given the prices here, that's what I would expect to see would be extraction, just because the price per square foot for cultivation wouldn't be as practical. But there's people with land everywhere and places that are expensive that you wouldn't expect they'd turn to it, because they might still decide they can make more money as a manufacturer in this city with the building they own than renting it for something else or selling it to a developer. I still think the quantity of application you would see would still be quite low.
Okay.
Involve your fire department when you, should you allow manufacturing, make sure they're at the table and involved for inspection purposes, I would say.
Yeah, everything is, in our facility, class one, division one, or class one, division two rated, a lot of exhaust, so on and so forth. So the fire department definitely was an integral role in developing that for Denver with a lot of education. So, yeah, get them involved early if you decide to go down that route.
Okay, what about testing labs? In which types of zoning districts are testing labs appropriate?
Testing labs can take on many capacities. They can test the product, and they can also be certified to inspect. So to inspect isn't easy, I think, no real imposition on the land use. But to test it, they would have to have specific product and chemicals to test the product. That could be a little more sensitive use, but definitely it's necessary, and there's not enough testing labs in the industry.
If you can take one, if you can get one to apply, take it. There's a big shortage, and they're pretty low-risk, they're carrying small amounts of products, they don't attract crime, and the people running these have to have ISO certification. So these are real professional chemists and labs. There's going to be a big shortage, and it's going to lead to a product shortage in January and the early months. So there's plenty of cities that have permitted this, but it's never created any new burden, because no one's been applying.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but there's three of us all here saying, what are they testing for?
They're testing for a bunch of different things. So THC content and a bunch of different cannabinoids. They're testing for pesticides, they're testing for mold, mildew, yeast, all things that are affiliated with the product's safety for the consumer.
Is this so they can be labeled, so the product can be labeled?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Right, they're also testing for quality of the product, the potency, the grade. So there's many aspects to it. And they all do have to be certified, and it's a very expensive proposition for these vendors.
It also doesn't take much space to open a lab, anywhere between 500 to 1500 square foot, and you have a testing lab. So the space constraint, the pricing wouldn't be impacted as well. In all of our products, we have to be tested and the batch released before we're able to actually put it on our shelves. So having the backup at the labs impacts business, and especially in a heavy cash business, cash-flowing business in the nascent, it's very important to make sure product gets to market.
I am talking to a couple of applicants that are interested in the testing industry, and they are actually joint-venturing with out-of-state testing labs initially until they get on board and-
And do you see these in medical complexes or retail stores? Where do they operate?
Not in a store. They're never going to be affiliated with a store, they have to be independently owned. They could be anywhere. When, I've been to many, you wouldn't have a clue from the outside. They can be in a whole lot of different places, so long as they would be zoned like any other type of, you know, food testing facility or anything of the sort. They're pretty inconspicuous.
Okay. Let's talk about commercial cultivation. What would that look like in a dense urban city like West Hollywood?
Not possible.
Possible.
No, I don't think with, again, the business and the culture here in California with the medical program, I think there's already some well-established, you know, producers and cultivators. This is a product that is a plant, it's not a widget. So it would be very, very difficult to run a successful, large-scale, commercial cultivation facility in a very densely populated area.
It's not even just that it's hard in a densely populated area, right? Denver's densely populated. It's that you guys don't have commercial zoning here, so you're not going to have a whole bunch of warehouses available and in surplus. Like in Denver, it made perfect sense in a heavily populated area, because there was, you know, everything went to China decades ago, and there was warehouses sitting empty for ages. But it sounds like in the geography of the city, it's a different story.
Is odor a problem with cultivation, and how is that controlled?
Trent will tell you it can be managed. I'll tell you that we do get complaints. So it can be, and we work hard with our folks and licensed folks to try to control that.
Yeah, there's, recently in Denver, they enacted an odor control, and the great thing about that was, they just didn't hold it to cannabis businesses. There's a large Perina factory right in downtown Denver, and the smell of dog food, cat food is not a pleasant one either. Some people, you know, they also complained about the cannabis smell. So, yes, there are ways to mitigate the odor of the plant. We're going through it right now in all three of our cultivation facilities. The thing that, you know, keeping in mind that you guys would more likely just be retail, everything comes prepackaged. So in the retail store, we're not actually doing or handling any of the regulated product, and therefore, the odor is much, much less and much lower.
Do you think we need local regulations on commercial cooking operations that use cannabis products in their food? Or is that something that will be properly handled at the state level, and we don't need local regulation? It's a stump, stumped.
We haven't addressed that yet. We're not seeing, certainly there are manufacturers who are making food, but it's not in a restaurant-type setting, it's more for products.
And I think part of that is because the onsite consumption conversation isn't happening yet, but I do think that as the onsite consumption conversation moves forward, and as businesses start to consider opening restaurants and having chefs prepare fresh food in conjunction with cannabis, I think that local jurisdictions should follow direction from the state. We're really pushing and hoping that now that there is onsite consumption that is allowed, that we get that direction from the state that'll say, if you want to open up a restaurant, these are the guidelines that you have to follow, and trying to match that up as close as possible to what the FDA says.
So you think the state will eventually handle that in consumption regulations, because people are consuming those products?
I believe so. I think that the two conversations can run very similarly, and I know that there is a process going on right now in which advocates are engaging with the different bureaus who are going to be regulating onsite consumption at these retail and microbusiness locations. And so I think that through that conversation, restaurants are going to come up. And it's either going to be, yes, and this is how we do it, or no, and there's going to have to be advocacy around why that's a smart decision.
In closing, I wanted to provide each of the panelists an opportunity to either answer one of the questions we had talked about before, or just tell us something that you think we need to know before we close up this panel. Kat, did you want to? Yeah, that's coming. Kat, did you want to talk about education?
Sure.
An education component?
I think that the reason why we've gotten to this point where we can have this conversation is because we've educated ourselves. I think that we have to continue to educate ourselves, both as to what cannabis is. I know while you were talking, and you were talking about CBD receptors, folks had some confused looks on their face, and so I think that there's a robust conversation that folks need to have about the actual science behind cannabis, and I think that that's going to be extremely important. But I think even more so important, I think that we have to acknowledge what our past cannabis policies have been, and the impact that these past cannabis policies have had on communities, particularly communities of color and low-income and Latino communities. Here in the state of California, blacks and Latinos are four times more likely to be arrested for cannabis. In 2015, despite folks being able to, you know, get a medical ID card and walk into a dispensary, African-Americans were two times more likely to be arrested for a marijuana misdemeanor, and five times more likely to be arrested for a marijuana felony. And if those disparities continue as we move forward, we've done it all wrong. So I think that we have to have a conversation about equitable enforcement, and we have that conversation through education around what the impact of past cannabis policies have been.
Thank you. Julia, you had missed our conversation earlier about selecting operators, but I know that that's something that you've worked on a lot and have some thoughts on. Do you want to provide some insight into the best way to select operators?
Oh, it's never an easy answer. Either first come, first served, their offering, or the random lottery sample. I think that municipalities should open it up and accept as many applications as possible, not necessarily first come, first served, but you can structure the application to select the applicants that suit your needs. And you do that with the questions, you do that with the indemnities you need, you do that with the background checks. So I really do believe that municipalities have a lot of control as to how to select their operators, and you don't have to resort to the random lottery system.
Do you have some thoughts on what the best selection methods are?
Well, like, you accept all applications, just accept all applications with a filing period, which I've found to be very successful, and you can take your time to review the applications. But I don't recommend a lottery system. I do think that contributes or invites litigation. I think a well-thought-out process of reviewing the applications, a very thorough application to meet your city's needs is the best.
Amanda, the questions that you were going to answer was, have the cities that banned commercial cannabis activity been successful in keeping those activities out of their cities, or does it create enforcement problems? Any other experiences with municipal bans that would be helpful to share?
That's an interesting one. That was the one I thought I was going to do, but that's, let's see. You know, it's so early, it's hard to know. It's really quite challenging to know that. Truly has. I think the people that have allowed and regulated have been more easily able to isolate the bad actors. And then, again, they have the funds and the permitting of that to go after the bad. Those who just purely ban are not receiving any funds on all of that. Now, if I do get to just twist a little to a different closing note, I express that, you know, this is just the first out of the first inning of a nine-inning ballgame, and you guys can consider everything, but you're not going to all get it right your first try. No one is. The city of Denver is still meeting to this day and amending their laws, and we don't have 50 years of history of how this is done. So it's not like, oh hey, we're going to go from a dry county to allowing liquor in our city, and we can look to 50 places that have done it for 100 years. Just do your best the first try, and expect that this is going to be a long process for years to come, but that we get to set precedent and show how to continue evolving it.
Jenny, do you have any thoughts on your experience in Fort Collins?
I think it's going to be important to hear from your community. So we have a very 50/50 community. We had a citizen-initiated ballot that banned all medical want, medical, medical stores, and then we had another citizen-initiated ballot that brought them all back. So we have gone back and forth. And so, in trying to balance the needs of our community, you know, we did do some location requirements, and we do have signage requirements, and storefront requirements, and what can be in windows, and we've done what we can to really try to, again, balance the diverse needs in our community, and you'll probably be doing the same. I think to Amanda's point, the accountability and the professionalism in the industry is growing exponentially, as is the entrepreneurial spirit, which is, again, why you're never going to get it right the first time, because something's going to come along that none of us have thought of. We've seen that multiple times. That said, we've built really good relationships with the owners and operators in our community. Our local prevention organization actually runs a responsible retailer association, and all those folks join in an effort to hold everyone kind of above board. They sometimes do, like, drive around underage checks on each other, you know, before our enforcement officers get in there. And yet it does take city resources. And we do now have a dedicated licensing authority, and we have a dedicated police officer who does our marijuana enforcement. So, just some thoughts.
Thank you. I want to close with a question on federal preemption, and Trent was going to speak about this, but I actually invite all of you to give your perspectives on federal preemption. So what are your thoughts regarding federal preemption with this new industry we're going to see in California? Do you think it poses significant risks to municipalities? And have you seen municipalities take any steps to address potential problems or prosecution of the municipality?
Yeah, so this one's ever-changing, you know, based on the administration and the people that have been in power, or have been placed in power, namely, you know, Jeff Sessions, our Attorney General, who does not have a very favorable outlook on cannabis, whether that's adult use or medical for that matter. So there have been, you know, continued conversations, you know, off-the-cuff remarks from Sean Spicer, who, you know, have, again, kind of played back and really started to make people look at and understand, you know, what's going to happen. This is still a scheduled one narcotic in the eyes of the federal government. Obviously with legislation over the last three, four years, ROR, BRCA, FAR, so on and so forth, there have been kind of continued support, although not full-on support of the programs. But, you know, this is something that, you know, come July 20- But, you know, this is something that, you know, come July 27th is kind of the magical date that we've heard. Mr. Sessions is just going to share his thoughts and possibly release additional information around the COLE memo. That is kind of the law of the land as it stands right now. You know, our understanding is that it's a state-regulated program that is kind of the veil that we operate under in the state of Colorado and other states. You know, unfortunately, you know, the state of California is, you know, continuing to move forward with, you know, implementing their program, and so I would hope that the state does get out there and license businesses and operators, you know, both here in West Hollywood but across the state as well, to provide some additional coverage for when and if, you know, the federal action were to take place. But yes, it is something that unfortunately, we have to deal with as an industry, but, you know, meetings like this and being responsible and continuing to build the professionalism within the industry will only strengthen the resolve of state leaders being able to stand up against the federal government. So, you know, thank you for the opportunity to come and speak, and thank you guys for taking the time on developing the right program and continuing to work towards that, because yeah, it's really what's going to be the defense against the federal government if they so choose to come in.
Just to add a little more legal ease to that, as we know, I don't know, I'm sorry if I missed it, but did you discuss the issue of failure to appropriate funds? Congress refuses to appropriate funds, but we have to remember that Congress took that position under the Obama administration. So it was a Republican congressional power base that refuses to set aside funds to enforce any prosecutions. Also, there's a case called REACH, which talked about the fact that in enacting the Controlled Substances Act, it was primarily to combat recreational drug use and to curb drug trafficking, not to regulate the practice of medicine. And so that is something that we have to walk the fine line on, but I don't see the current administration rushing to challenge those statutes at this time. I say move forward, cities and states.
To echo that, I agree, I think that local jurisdictions should move forward. I think that part of that is what AB 1578, which is the non-cooperation bill authored by Assemblymember Reggie Jones Sawyer, that was its intention. And now, earlier, it was mentioned that there were some concerns that were voiced by police unions, so some of that language is actually being changed right now so that it does allow for the federal government and for state police enforcement to go after operators who are not in compliance with state law. But I do think that it's important both for local jurisdictions and the state to say, hey, you know, Californians have decided that they no longer want to send folks to jail who are abiding by California law. This is what the voters enacted, and so this is what we can do to try and protect ourselves. The Drug Policy Alliance has kind of walked through a couple of scenarios of what the feds could do if they come in, and so we've kind of assessed what they have done before. For example, previous Attorney General in Nevada sent a letter to organizers when there was an onsite consumption event that kind of got out of hand. So you might see letters specifically from the federal government to local regulatory agencies. There could be raids of unlicensed businesses, raids of licensed businesses, and it could be in line with what the Obama administration had, depending on if they're following that COLE memo. Another thing that could happen is civil asset forfeiture of assets that belong to unlicensed businesses. You could see prosecutions and criminal convictions, but this seems less likely. There's an opportunity for the federal government to request subpoena information from state and local officials, patient info, licensing info. They could seize state and local tax revenue. This all seems very unlikely, but these are options that the federal government would have before.
Okay, now I'll turn it back over to the mayor to ask some questions.
Well, great. Thank you, Lauren, for leading us through this discussion, and let's thank all of our panelists for their input. We do have a number of public speakers, but we're going to take the council questions for our panelists first, and I'm going to just have us each ask a question. We'll keep rotating down the line. If you'd like to start, Councilmember Orvath, and then we'll just go down the line.
Sure. You had mentioned, Trent, you had mentioned that microbusinesses, was it you that mentioned it? Or that microbusinesses are what the state is allowing to be a site for consumption? Can you define what a microbusiness is according to the law?
Sure. So, a microbusiness is a specific business type that would allow for basically vertical integration across the board. Testing always has to be separate, but essentially, it would allow for the cultivation, manufacturing, distribution, and retail in one license that could be held by a business type, as long as the cultivation of that particular business was less than 10,000 square feet. So, and essentially, onsite consumption is going to be allowed at a retail location or a microbusiness type, so either a specific retail license or a microbusiness license that has this all-encompassing activities, but is limited to less than 10,000 square feet of cultivation, so kind of what you would see like as a winery might offer.
Got it, thank you.
And this is all just statute. What the regulations will dictate will be determinative.
Councilmember Meister.
Thank you. I guess this question is for Ginny. Do you have different levels of permits? For example, maybe you have a permit or license for, you know, what would be maybe a converted medical marijuana site versus a coffee shop that sells for recreational?
So we have, Colorado's interesting, we have a dual licensing program, so the state's going to license, and then the municipality is also going to license. And we have matching licenses under both medical and then under retail, and they are strictly for either the dispensary or store, a cultivation, a manufacturer, and then testing, of which we have none. So those are the only types of licenses we have at this point.
Mayor Protam.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a lot of questions, but I'll just try to hit the big ones.
We're just doing one at a time.
I know, I know. My day job is I'm a criminal defense lawyer, I've been so for 30 years.
That's not a question.
You're going to both have to give me some latitude here, because I need to set some context for my question. One of my first clients was the First Needle Exchange here in Southern California. One of my other first clients was the First Medical Marijuana Facility here in Southern California, the L.A. Cannabis Resource Center. It was the one and only one, back in 96. So I've been doing marijuana almost 25 years, but I have a great concern about all the talk about Sacramento preempting this area. My experience, when Sacramento tries to preempt the area and occupy the field, they tend to suffocate out local control and local regulation. So I heard some of you talk about some of the things happening in Sacramento, and Sacramento setting the standards, and Sacramento setting regulations. And so I guess I, maybe it was Ms. Packer primarily, but I guess my question is whether Sacramento is trying to occupy this field or whether they're giving more authority or leaving more of the arena to local government for us to regulate as we seek it.
I think that there's broad local control. Essentially, what's happening is the state is setting up minimum guidelines, specific operational requirements, but all in all, local jurisdictions can still decide to completely ban. They can choose, we're only going to allow testing here, we're only going to allow retail here. You have to be compliant with local law in order to get a state license, you don't have to be affirmatively licensed, but essentially, if there's a ban in your jurisdiction and you try to go to the state and get a license, you'll be denied. There is now a responsibility and kind of a role play between the local jurisdiction and the state. Local jurisdictions are supposed to designate a lead on cannabis policy essentially, and if there's supposed to be a relationship by which, if there's a ban, then the local lead needs to let the state know what the ban is. If there is a state licensing authority that finds an applicant from your local jurisdiction, they're going to call that lead and say, hey, we have this applicant, what's your local policy? Have you already said that these people cannot be licensed? And so there is going to be an exchange, but I do think that there's broad local control. Local authorities can set their own buffer zones, they can decide what they want their own sensitive uses to be, they can set up their own operational requirements. So I do think that while these state licensing authorities are leading the way, there's still a lot of local control.
I may just add too, yeah, the state is providing the enabling legislation, but locals, I'm calling it local preemption. You can decide where, like you were saying, the distance of where you want the locations is, whether you want to allow it, and what location, the distance between businesses, the size of the business, I mean, so you really do have a lot of control as to how you regulate this industry.
And it's not that they're preempting, they're setting the minimum. You can always make a stricter requirement, you can't make a less restrictive requirement. The question that's going to come in, though, too, is you guys can make a lot of duplicative rules on top of the state's rules, and you might have a perfect rule for West Hollywood, but there's a rule that's, you know, slightly less impressive made by the state, and do you want to put that dual compliance requirement onto the licensee to where they have prohibitively expensive compliance requirements? Because they're already going to be facing extreme amount of taxation and other compliance burdens. So where you're going to lose some local control isn't because you don't have that control, it's where you're going to have to make business decisions as to what is too duplicative and costly for there to be, you know, sustainable business.
Councilmember D'Amico.
Thank you, Mayor. I wasn't sure, maybe Lauren, you can clarify. So was it, is it clear in the state regulations that a business can, for example, CVS has an ask that I know of, but could marijuana be sold in California at a CVS?
It's not going to be able to be sold where they sell alcohol or tobacco. So a CVS sells alcohol and tobacco, and that couldn't happen.
Okay, so can you sell marijuana at the Shake Shack? I don't think they sell alcohol there.
I don't think they sell alcohol either.
Oh, they do. Go to the Shake Shack. Can you sell marijuana at a Starbucks?
I think they're going to have to be, once, get a state license. It has to be their primary use, I think that's what...
So the state says that marijuana sales has to be the primary use of the business?
Primary use of the location.
So you can't take an existing business like the yogurt stop and put in a counter that sells edible chocolates?
And I, yes, and I also think some national companies like Starbucks are probably not going to want for businesses to get...
Understood, understood. I don't mean to drag Starbucks into our marijuana discussion. But, so, you said yes, and the yes was you cannot take a business and start selling sort of like chocolates at the yogurt stop that are edibles.
Right, but as Trent was saying, he could also sell some T-shirts, because that's not the primary use.
If you frame any business that follows the state laws and gets licenses, it can, like, an example, in Colorado, there's a gas and grass, but you have to pay, like, if you're just gassing up, then you pay at the pump, and then the only way you can get into the part where the dispensary is, is because it's built like a dispensary within every other confine of the state laws, doesn't sell chips, doesn't sell soda, it's a licensed dispensary that happens to be next to the gas. But no matter what, it's still going to have to meet all the state requirements.
All right. Lauren, why don't we start with, oh, you want to start with Lindsay? Okay, we'll start with Lindsay this time.
Mayor, you're not asking questions?
What?
You're not asking questions?
No, I'm leading.
Okay, very good. Someone mentioned that you're fully banked, is that you, okay. So can you tell me who you bank with and how you made that happen?
Sure. So it's actually a credit union by the state of Colorado, so they have a platform, it's called Partners of Colorado, and the program is actually called Safe Harbor, is the platform that they use. And she actually wrote a book, her name is Sunday, so it's something that kind of outlines their program, and, you know, we have a very good relationship with her, so that's something, you know, if necessary, an introduction can be made.
I do know some of our local licensees are banked, and they're just banking with local banks. They're not advertising it and telling everyone where they're going, but there is banking happening.
Yes, I just wondered what kind of commercial neighborhoods you're allowing or that you're located in, because we, you know, we're a small city, and we're only 1.9 square miles, and we have residential abutting, all of our commercial streets, pretty much. So what do you look for when you're trying to open up a store?
For us, it's just like any traditional retail, high foot traffic, parking, population density. It's no different than if we were to, you know, open your traditional athletic store, storefront or anything like that. So it's traditional retail for us.
Just to follow up, I assume that you have to be a certain distance from, say, schools or playgrounds or...
Thousand, a thousand feet is usually the magical number.
What about residential?
No restriction for us.
We have a restriction on residential, and it's, I'm not going to remember what it is, but it's some number of feet from a residential zone. So if we have a commercial zone, typically, we'll have a buffer zone, you won't be right next to residential, but if you were, you'd have to be at least this number of feet from that.
Thank you. Mayor Protam.
I want to ask, I guess it's probably Ms. Silva's probably the most appropriate, but anyone, the rubric for, you weren't here for the discussion on the rubric for qualification, but some of the panelists brought up developing a system or a rubric to evaluate potential applicants to apply, to have one of these businesses. I guess I want to hear if there was any, from any of you, any discussion about the fact that, one, this is a pioneering era, and this is pioneering work. So whatever rubric is being developed, it's going to be based on non-marijuana, almost qualifications. And I would suggest that a rubric that would be set up with capital requirements, business experience, et cetera, is only going to favor large companies like Mr. Wolovek's, and might snuff out the innovation of small, local operators who would not be able to compete with some of the large corporate entities that want to occupy this field. So I want to hear about if there was any balancing between large corporations who would have plenty of capital, plenty of experience, plenty of lawyers, versus just a local, perhaps West Hollywood owner-operator, or a local person who wouldn't have the same level of financial or resource backing as the big corporate entities.
Yeah, definitely, you would look at the security plan, the business plan, the financial background, the experience, and you can also give a local preference as a municipality, which would be reasonable and enforceable.
No, it's a compliment, so thank you. Yeah, it's something that, you know, has been done from Connecticut to, you know, Massachusetts to Nevada to, you know, Colorado. It's, there are examples out there that have shown, and, you know, I think we alluded to this earlier, it really does limit the exposure of lawsuits, so on and so forth, and not being able to get your businesses up and off the ground to create jobs and to generate tax revenue. That's really... That's really the two big pieces that a successful operating cannabis industry would bring to the city.
Councilmember D'Amico.
So in the delivery model, is there such a thing as business-to-business delivery? For example, could a restaurant say, instead of your chocolate souffle, we can deliver you a chocolate, chocolate cannabis morsel? Or you could order a delivery product and it would arrive where you're going to have your massage? As a business-to-business model? I know you sort of carefully talked through the business-to-resident model, but is there any reason why that would be restricted?
The only business-to-business models we're seeing are people who are manufacturing a particular product and selling it to the retail store. So you have that sort of wholesale transaction of delivering an infused product. Yeah.
If you were going to do B-to-B, the way you were describing it, it's really B-to-C. The consumer would have been the massage parlor. So then it would have been business to the massage parlor being the consumer, and then they'd have to give away that product for free in order for that to work. So it wouldn't be... So the transaction you envisioned, you said from the delivery company to the massage parlor. The massage parlor isn't licensed to sell that product. So that would really be a business-to-consumer transaction where the massage parlor is the consumer, and then they would be giving that product away to their client as like, you know, massage, and we just start upgrading your topical or whatever it may be. But that would be B-to-C.
So the consumer can order the delivery anywhere?
Not anywhere. Can't be in private, public property. And there's several other restrictions, I can't tell you off the top of my head, but I think Kat probably knows those.
Can't deliver to a school. Right.
Got it.
So, you know, sensible regulations on where you can deliver. Of course, can't deliver to a school, you can't deliver on public lands, and I think...
City Hall?
Yeah, here. But I think that, once again, local jurisdictions can restrict and create their own rules as to where delivery cannot be allowed. But essentially, as Amanda was saying, if the business is trying to, and businesses are going to try and get around, find loopholes to the system, but essentially, that needs to be regulated. If you have a business that's saying, I can deliver to your massage parlor, and there's some exchange of funds between either the massage parlor and the person who's giving the cannabis delivery, we want to make sure that there's no sale involved. Because if there's a sale involved specifically at that massage parlor, then that's unlicensed commercial cannabis activity.
Thank you. I'm going to jump in with a question. A number of our speakers have indicated that one method we could use is a merit-based system, kind of like our request for qualifications or request for proposals from other businesses when we are looking for services for the city. Have you been able to gather those kind of requests for proposals or merit-based systems from other jurisdictions? So do we have some templates of what other cities have done? And we would then have the opportunity to determine what the criteria are and the scoring for any proposals.
But we haven't gotten to that level of detail yet because we wanted to explore tonight if you even wanted to have a limit on the number of retailers. And once we get that question, I think staff will be exploring more the, what that application would look like, what other cities have done, and get into the details of it.
So if we were to say tonight, we would like to explore that, that we don't want a, just a free-market approach, we want to have a limit, and we want to go out with a method that will attract the best qualified operators for West Hollywood, we could direct you to do that.
Yes, and in fact, that's one of the questions I've been asked to pose to you at the end of this, is if you're prepared to give direction on that tonight.
So just a logistics question. I know that we told our guests that this was going to be from 5:00 to 7:00, and we're quickly approaching that time. I'm thinking that maybe we'll take another 15 minutes of council member questions, then take a quick break, and then turn to our public speakers, because we have about 20 of them now. And that, at two minutes each, that's going to take us another 40 minutes. How does that sound as a game plan? Okay? All right, back to you, Councilmember Horvath.
Thank you, Mayor. I know Colorado, you had mentioned Colorado restricted dosing, but from my understanding, that doesn't necessarily, dosing doesn't necessarily restrict potency, does it? How do we ensure that people know what they're consuming and who in the state of California, which department is responsible for labeling, so we know what's in the product?
That'll be mandated at the state level. So in Colorado, the party's talking about the limitation that only applies to recreational. And they have one of the testings that asks to be done and will be done in California's homogeneity testing. So they will ensure that what is called a serving size is being accurately cut apart in that way, because you wouldn't want, you know, it to have 100 milligrams in one corner of your chocolate bar and the rest. So there's, that stuff will all be enforced at the state level.
By whom?
So it depends on what it is with edibles. It's going to be the Department of Public Health, because they're overseeing manufacturing facilities. But the Bureau of Cannabis Control will play into all of it as well, because they're the ones overseeing the testing facilities, where these testing requirements for homogeneity and that will be enforced. You know, but those are pretty much, I think, the two you're looking for.
And as it's currently articulated, it's, the dosage for edibles is going to be 10 milligrams of THC per serving.
Proposed.
Proposed.
I think that, I don't think that's going to stick from the medical side as much. I think there's a lot of pushback.
I don't think that that's going to be specific to a package, but in its...
Oh, yes.
In its labeling, correct, there's going to be 10 milligrams per serving. So you might have 20 servings in one package, but that's going to have to be specified.
Thank you.
Councilmember Meister.
Thank you. So my question is to Trent, because you're in a number of states. So what state has done it best?
They've continued to, you know, hear feedback from business owners, business operators. They've continued to build relationships, you know, within the government, the regulating body, the MED, Marijuana Enforcement Division, has done and helped created a strong industry. Nevada's another good one that you could look at to draw from. They've continued to push extremely hard and be on the forefront of implementation of adult use. They just implemented adult use July 1 of this year, so nine, 10 days ago as well. Pushing and ensuring that, again, it's both responsible from a public safety concern, but also allowing businesses to grow and operate.
Mayor Protem.
Thank you. I want to talk about some of the areas that were brought up. I think that, given West Hollywood's limited real estate, that cultivation is probably not going to be a big issue for us. We may have some issues around manufacturing and testing. I think we're going to try to develop a model ordinance, so I think we should make it as broad as we can, even though there may not be many applicants. We have some experience with retail already, because we've been having medicinal marijuana facilities here for quite a while now. I guess the topic that interests me is the onsite consumption. Because in the city of West Hollywood, which is a city with adult theater history, we have, you know, the Go-Go Girls, the Whiskey-a-Go-Go, we have...
Question?
I'm getting it.
Okay.
We have topless bars. So we have a different sensibility around some of these issues than, let's say, some of our neighbors to the north or south in Orange or Ventura Counties. So given that, the whole issue of onsite consumption seems to be an area that we could pioneer. Are there any other cities or counties that have looked at the issue of onsite consumption? There was a reference to Oakland, but it was limited. It seemed to be attached to a, either cultivation or manufacturing facility. Are there any other cities that have taken this issue on that we could look to?
Denver's been, I mean, they just put out their final regs like two weeks ago, and they've been going back and forth. It's I-300, and it's the Social Consumption Initiative. It's not at the dispensaries, but it's creating public spaces for consumption. And it's, they vetted it very heavily. We track every single meeting of the Special Issues Committee on it, so I'm sure we could pass some of the information along.
Councilmember D'Amico.
Thank you. And I, so I have a short, I have two questions, one of them is super short. So manufacturing, does sort of boutique manufacturing of products, like making teas or coffees, or is that manufacturing? So if somebody had a 500-square-foot storefront and had a chocolate factory where they made, that's a manufacturing? So that would be zoned that way in your world?
Correct, yes.
Okay, great, thanks. And then, so the next question I had was about public safety. And Ginny, you mentioned, I don't know how big Fort Collins is, it's probably much larger than West Hollywood.
52 square miles.
Right, so it's 25 times our city. And you hired, you know, you said, yeah, we had to, you know, expand city resources. You have two employees, from what you said, right? That seems like, at 25 times smaller, you know, that's somebody's left leg, maybe the bottom half, right? So it doesn't seem like we're going to, that if we had a model that followed what's going on, that we would have much public safety increase in concerns. You don't have to actually say, but I just wonder...
And I don't think it's public safety, it's building relationships with those owners, with the law enforcement person, so that if they have an issue, they're equally comfortable and have a contact to say, my technology on my video cameras just went out, and I'm required by law to have them, and it's not happening right now, what do I do? It's having to do the inspections, if you have an inspection component, so that someone has to go look at the store before it opens and confirm that everything is X, Y, Z.
Is that every day, or just in its first time?
No, just getting it open.
Right, because I think the discussion that all of you really had about the relationship with public safety, the police, fire department, especially if there were manufacturing or, you know, requiring Class 1, Division 1, sort of chemicals, et cetera, that it seems like with our sort of already fairly sophisticated public safety and the work that we do in sort of regulating our businesses, that we're probably pretty close to what we need, especially since we have four businesses that have been operating pretty much without incidents.
And your staff has practiced. They've been doing that application, that renewal process, I'm sure. So you do have more experience at this point to kind of build upon.
Right, I guess I'm, so I'm, there is a question in there, but it comes from a place of feeling relieved that our public safety oversight already is probably sufficient to take on this scaling up of our cannabis businesses, at least in the short term, and then I guess we could respond if we needed to.
Depends on how much you scale up, because I'm sure your staff isn't twiddling their thumbs now. So it is going to be something additional, and depending on the level at which you scale up, there will be an impact and a resource need. How great that need is, I don't know.
And then the last thing is, how is that paid for? Do you have a tax source, or is it, like, can we charge $10,000 a year for a business license, and then that would just cover the public safety incremental change?
We have, I think they're high, but I'm not in the business. Pretty high fees and an annual fee and an operating fee and a business fee, and that money does, it goes into our general fund, but we are collecting it to then put it back out.
It sounds like Trent, you want, or looked like you wanted to respond to that.
Yeah, I was just going to say, we pay licensing fees everywhere on an annual basis, renewal. And then we also have special tax in some of the other cities and counties and municipalities that goes on top of the state and the sales tax.
All right, this is the rapid-fire round of questions. So I'm going to have everyone ask one last question, and then we'll take a 10-minute break, and then we'll turn to the public comments.
So you've mentioned a Bureau of Cannabis Control, there's local control, and then I also know that there's a County Office of Cannabis Management. How do all of these levels of bureaucracy, how are they structured to work together? And, you know, at what, who's in control of what?
So the Bureau of Cannabis Control is headed by a woman named Lori Ajax. They're going to be responsible for the licensing, inspection, renewal, application process of retail establishments, distributors, testing. There is a, the Department of Food and Agriculture is going to be responsible for licensing cultivation. And then the Department of Public Health is going to be responsible for licensing manufacturing. Local jurisdictions still have control over what type of business types they have, what type of local regulations, operational requirements. And then this new Office of Cannabis Management, or Cannabis Control, that's at the county, they formed in December, and they've been meeting to try and figure out what the, one in unincorporated LA County, what their responsibilities are in providing services. Just last week, they started an advisory working group. There are about 10 to 15 members who are on this group. They're looking at a number of different things, from a public education campaign to youth safety, DUID protocols and conversations, consumer safety, a very robust conversation. What they're planning on doing is putting together a huge comprehensive report on what marijuana regulations should look like in the county, and also those services that they're going to provide. They're also having, they're having listening sessions this summer, all throughout the county, so folks can, in the community, can engage to be a part of that conversation.
And one just quick thing to add, the licensed businesses here, they'll be regulated by the state and West Hollywood. You're located, you're regulated not by all three. You're either an unincorporated portion of the county or within the city. You guys have this strange caveat, though, in that you outsource a lot of your services to the county sheriffs and fire departments, so it'll be a little bit more nuanced, because when it comes to local oversight of the fire regulations, you're going to end up pulling on, I'm not sure how it works, you might have to be pulling on their staff, but to enforce your rules, and you might just, I have no idea how it would work, outsourcing of that to the county.
Lauren?
This, I guess it's for Ginny again. So your fee, you have fees or license based on operating costs and start, whatever, but so you don't have taxes on, based on their revenues?
We did not add an additional tax in our community. At the state level, we have additional taxes, and those state taxes get dispersed back out for different things. And since we're dual-licensed, we also pick up some of the state license fee back to us, but we do not have any additional local tax.
So what kind of annual revenue are you looking at?
I knew you were going to ask that. It is, let me look while people talk, and I'll get back.
Mayor Protem.
I have a question about the issue of background checks. Normally, somebody who is a convicted felon or has been registered as a narcotics offender would be excluded from an application with city government. However, there are individuals who have felony convictions for the very behavior that's now going to become lawful very soon. Transportation, distribution, manufacturing, cultivation are all felonies in the state of California. So were those categories exempted, or are those categories just highlighted for further analysis? What do we do on felony convictions for behavior that may soon be lawful?
Yeah, you can't, you wouldn't be able to be licensed in the state of Colorado, in the state of Florida, state of Illinois, those are all disqualifying. I believe Oregon's disqualifying as well. I wouldn't, I don't know about Nevada, but yes, it's disqualifying.
In California, it is not. We fought very hard to make sure it's not, because we know, we know that blacks and Latino populations were disproportionately labeled as felon during the drug war, during marijuana prohibition. So now, the specific language is that it has to be substantially related to the conduct of that business, and the specific provisions exempt folks with marijuana possession, trafficking up to a certain extent. So there are levels, if you've got basically drug felony plus, but essentially, if it's just a marijuana offense, you're not going to be barred. The Bureau does have discretion, but we are working very closely with the Bureau to make sure that there aren't discriminatory practices that have played out in other states in the state of California.
Mayor...
May I? Pardon me, Mayor, may I mention something? We already have this caveat in our existing business license ordinance for medical marijuana, where the applicant requirements, you cannot have a license if you had any offense relating to possession, manufacture, sales, or distribution of controlled substance, with the exception of marijuana-related offenses, and offenses involving the use of force, violence, and it goes on. So we do exempt already marijuana-related offenses.
How, how, I wanna talk about testing. So we talked about product mix, delivery, public safety, manufacturing, I wanna talk about testing. How can we, in a sort of thorough-going way, attract testing businesses to our city? It seems like that's a fairly sophisticated set of businesses that want to be in sort of a, you know, a second-story in the back kind of room doing that, and it sounds like that would be a good business to reach, to do outreach to, for our city, because we're a small city, they'd have direct access to our city hall, public safety, et cetera. So maybe you can just talk a bit about how we might attract testing businesses?
Low fees. Low fees and streamlining the permitting process. There's several cities that have actually met about it recently and doing a streamlined, faster permitting process for these businesses who are already state-licensed businesses or ISO-certified.
And, and are those businesses sort of satellite testing offices, or does each testing office have to be its own entity? Like, can, can ABC Testing, that's already operating in Colorado, open a business here?
Yes.
Right, right, it's an international type of certification that applies, so they would probably be able to do business here. And the city could effectively attract that enterprise here by not only low fees, but other types of entitlements. You could make that your forte.
Yeah, I would, I would do tax credits as well. That, tax is a big thing for all of cannabis, with 280 and whole, whole different subject, but yeah, tax credit would be another, I think, creative way to, to draw in businesses, testing businesses.
Salinas is meeting tomorrow to propose an ordinance that will streamline the process for cannabis testing labs.
I would imagine that one of the concerns is the high rents that are charged here in West Hollywood. That may be a bigger deterrent than any government policy that we would set. I, I wanna thank you again for all of your expertise and sharing it with us. Really amazing. And I, I've been trying to move this along, but I wanna make sure that everyone on the council understands that this is not the only time for us to ask questions. We can submit those questions in writing, and our panel is, has agreed to answer them. Those answers will be posted on the city's website. But I wanna make sure that we hear from the public tonight and give our staff some direction, because we need to be ready by January 1st. So we're gonna go ahead and take a 10-minute break. I'd ask people to really give the council 10 minutes. Don't rush up all at once. We're gonna take 10 minutes, we'll come back, we're gonna hear the public comment, and then we'll try to give some direction. Thank you again.
Thank you. It was-
I think that they're trying to figure out what that, what that looks like. We didn't watch it.
Testing.
Why? Oh. Oh, yeah, and I think that they're excited about what's going on. I was like, what? Uh huh, just so people know. I think that you might have to go tell, but I don't think that you'd be dispensing.
Councilmember Horvath. Councilmember Duran. Councilmembers D'Amico and Meister. I am going to call the meeting back to order. I think my other two colleagues are on their way back. They're coming slowly. If I can ask people to take their seats, we're now going to turn to the public comment. Our first speaker this evening is Jean Dobrin.
Well regulated like alcohol has. That's a crock of a four-letter word that begins with S. Well, alcohol has not been regulated. Look at this crime. Look at the things that have happened with people trying to make money just from alcohol. Look at the murders. Look at the gangs. Look at this stuff. This, you know, bless John Duran. He says, "We shouldn't get rid of Wells Fargo because they are so good to gay and lesbian people. I'm a straight person and I'm really good to gay and lesbian people. They're mostly my friends." And that is not a good reason. It's a crooked outfit and that's what's going to happen with this cannabis. And I applaud you guys bowing to it and trying to do the right thing. Good for you, my city council. Good for you. Thank you.
Thank you, Jean. Our next speaker is Marv Auerbach, to be followed by Adam Gilman.
About my particular problem. I live less than 100 feet from the Zen Healing at 8462-70. And I'm completely unhappy. A lot of the city council members know this, the sheriff's department. But a few things have been answered by talking to some of your experts, and I hope you have this panel discussion again, about more security, giving power, more power to code enforcement, or if the city council wants to create a cannabis agency to regulate it. I'm unhappy with the guards at that facility. One of the guards has been urinating on the property, and I was incensed. I spoke to the city council through Beth. I also talked to one of the managers. Things have gotten better, and the sheriff's department. I ju-- one thing I would like to see where people can only smoke in their house. I don't like this, I don't, I don't like the smell of it.
Excuse me, Marv. Ms. Dobrin, please stop ejaculating.
I didn't think I was that exciting anymore at 73 years of age. My god. If she has money, I'll go talk to her. But I would really appreciate if the city council looks at the concerns, not only of me, but I resent, represent other people in my building. And I know marijuana has passed, but there needs to be tight regulations, not only on this facility and the other facilities. And cameras where the guards have to be scrutinize who they are, and when I complain to code enforcement about the Zen Healing, if they have the authority, they talk to the management of that facility. Also, the owner of the property, Joe Mogul, has a responsibility. I've always felt that the owner of a property who leases to businesses has a moral responsibility to say to the business, "I don't want any problems with that old bald-headed, redheaded man across the way. Don't give him any problems." Also, one more thing. Beth, who works for your city council, is fantastic. I applaud you for hiring her. She's wonderful. She's had to listen to me, and I don't know, and in fact, I promised to pay for her psychiatric care if she needs it, but she's really wonderful.
Thank you, Marv. Adam Gilman, to be followed by Cindy Copo Bianco.
Hi, my name's Adam Gilman. I've been a citizen of the city of West Hollywood for seven years. I'm a business owner here. I own Cycle House. We've been operating within the city for five years, serving the community. And I'm also the CEO and co-founder of Field, a medical cannabis company with operations in both California and Colorado. I'm here today not because I have a vested interest in the expansion of this industry. I'm here today to talk about what I think is really important for this city to embrace as a citizen of this wonderful town. Most particularly, I think it's incredibly important to understand that the people have spoken, both locally, at a state level, and nationally, if you look at polling data and things of that sort, where they stand as it relates to recreational cannabis and, and the kind of lies that have been fed down our throats for a very long time. Somebody referred to the Reefer Madness ideology earlier. And since the people have spoken, I think it's very important for a progressive city like the city of West Hollywood to really embrace what is going to be the next great economic boom in this country for the next 50 years. And in my opinion, the way that we do that is twofold. Number one, we need to expand retail. Marv spoke of some issues with an existing dispensary in this city. I don't have anything bad to say about Zen in particular, but when there's a lack of competition, it doesn't incentivize people to get better. Competition is what makes this country great, and it's, it's what's going to make the cannabis operations in this city better. Second, I think there's a huge opportunity for manufacturing in this city. Contrary to popular belief, we do not need factories to manufacture cannabis products. Think of it as analogous to the craft beer industry. I think the city of West Hollywood has a huge opportunity to be a beacon for innovation for this industry in Southern California. Thank you so much for letting me speak.
Thank you. Cindy Copo Bianco, to be followed by Melissa Volpert.
Before I hand this to Cindy, for those of you who are speaking under public comment, if you could stand here in the light so that the camera guys can get you.
My name is Cindy Copo Bianco, and my husband and I are the founders of Lord Jones. We have two 11-year-old twin girls and have raised them in the city of West Hollywood. We've been to the library many times, the pool. We have really spent more time in the city than any other in Los Angeles. I just, a bit about myself, actually, before I get to that, I just want to tell you and thank you so much for having this open conversation and having this very progressive and forward-thinking conversation to open up, an open dialogue and to really fully understand and grasp cannabis as it is. I am the face of cannabis, which is surprising to many. And my, our, our company is an infused products company. We make topicals and ingestibles, otherwise known as edibles. Four years ago when we started this business, we were established as a nonprofit collective, and we became caregivers. And every single idea about the cannabis industry or cannabis that I had before getting into this business has completely changed. We are, you know, our values and our, all of our beliefs about our family and West Hollywood are reflected through our business, and we're caregivers to many patients who suffer from a variety of very serious illnesses. I'm coming to you today to request the idea of us opening our very first Lord Jones dispensary in the Standard Hotel. There are other people who will speak to you about this, and we really believe this is the right move for West Hollywood, and really appreciate your time in understanding this issue. As far as my background, I worked for Gap Inc. for eight years as the vice president of global marketing and have an extensive career in not only startups, but also corporate, and can bring all of those skills and do bring all those skills to the table. Thank you.
Thank you. Melissa Volpert, to be followed by Robert Rosenheck.
Good evening. I'd like to thank the city of West Hollywood for taking the lead on this issue and for being so progressive. My name is Melissa Volpert. I'm the director of sales and marketing at the Standard. I began my career--
Melissa, you need to come around the corner and stand in the light.
I began my hotel career at Mondrian in the mid-'80s, and I've been at the Standard for the last 20 years. In fact, I'm the first employee of the Standard brand, and my role is to keep the hotel, all the rooms full and to look after our guests, and most importantly, to be a good neighbor. Robyn and Cindy, the owners of Lord Jones, are the kind of people that we like to do business with. We've known them for some time and can assure you that they're, they're responsible and sophisticated operators. We share the same values and clientele, and we want to lease them space for a Lord Jones store in the hotel. We're looking forward to offering a sophisticated retail environment to our guests, and we hope you will take this into consideration when crafting the city ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Robert Rosenheck, to be followed by Michael Churness.
Hi, I'm Rob Rosenheck. I'm Cindy's wife. I mean, Cindy's husband. So, yeah, I want to thank you guys. We've been engaged with the whole cannabis process in numerous cities. I have never participated in a study session like this tonight. Thank you, guys. Your approach is progressive, remarkable, visionary, and I thank you. I just want to, again, just talk about a little bit about our background. Cindy and I ran a creative agency for 10 years. We worked in the food industry. We worked with General Mills for six years. We understand food manufacturing. We think manufacturing in West Hollywood is a terrific idea. There are basically two kinds of manufacturing in cannabis. You can do extraction, which could be more complicated involving solvents, and then there's infusion, which is what we do. So cannabis is just an ingredient in our edibles and topicals. So basically, we're looking to build a commercial kitchen. Cannabis is just an ingredient. We think this is something that would be great in West Hollywood. We want to make West Hollywood our home and the headquarters of our company. We want to do manufacturing, and as Melissa and Cindy said, we want to do retail. We worked with Planned Parenthood. It was one of our clients. They were a pro bono client for over six years. We helped them throughout Southern California. That's how we were sort of led into West Hollywood. So, again, we're not defy a lot of the stereotypes of who cannabis operators are. So, wanted to thank you again and, you know, take all this into consideration as you guys move forward crafting the ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael Churness, to be followed by Esther Baum. It's Mr. Churness here, Michael Churness. Esther Baum, to be followed by Ruben Honig.
Esther Baum, 27-year resident of West Hollywood. Our population increases enormously on the weekends. Most of those people pay the hotels and the clubs and so on with credit cards. I'm afraid if they have to bring in cash, we're going to have a Wild West atmosphere. I would like to have the cannabis not paid by cash, but by credit card. That will make our city much safer. Thank you.
Thank you, Esther. Ruben Honig, to be followed by Kellen Martz.
Honorable mayor, city council members, thank you to city staff and thank you for our expert panel and for putting on this study session. It was very informative. I really appreciate it. My name is Ruben Honig. I'm the executive director of the Los Angeles Cannabis Task Force. We are working on helping the city craft regulations in the city of Los Angeles, but I'm also first and foremost a patient. After 17 years of Crohn's disease, which was extremely debilitating, I moved to West Hollywood three years ago as actually a sanctuary. I was very fortunate to have a family member living here, and he helped me move out here. And actually, through cannabis as a medicine, I was able to put my, I wasn't able to put it into remission, but I've been in remission, and the reason why I'm standing here is for over two years is from the cannabis plant. And thank you. I really have a special place in my heart for West Hollywood as a sanctuary for me. I appreciate it. I want to talk about non-storefront delivery as a retail model. About a year and a half ago, when we started this process in the city of Los Angeles, it, it wasn't really looked at as, as a viable model. It was thought more of, you know, villains and drug dealers and criminals are, are delivery services. But now, you know, a year and a half later, it's realized that with the regulatory structure put into place, as Amanda spoke to, and the trailer bill that was recently signed by the governor, there is now clarity around, you know, it needs to be tied to a physical space, but it doesn't have to necessarily be a dispensary. It can be a non-retail location, in a physical location. In the city of Los Angeles, it actually contemplates sensitive uses that are much less onerous than a retail dispensary because there is no walk-in traffic and you actually don't see it. It's, it's just like any other business type. So, you know, it doesn't necessarily have to have buffers between them. It can be in a commercial zone or an industrial zone. And actually, as, as a patient, you know, and my time is running out, but I just want to say, number one, as a patient, it's the humane thing to do, to license delivery services, but as a workaround and a way to bring in more cannabis, you know, revenue into the city, delivery is a great model to look at. I don't think that there should be any restriction put on it, and you should contemplate having as many non-storefront delivery services in West Hollywood. Thank you.
Thank you. Kellen, Kellen Martz, I think he's left. Jackie Subek, to be followed by Dani Shaker.
Hi, good evening. I'm Jackie Subek. I want to thank all the city council, as well as planning and every, all the staff and everybody who's working really, really hard on this. I think that you guys are, we're doing it right. So cheers to everybody. I want to talk about onsite consumption because I know that's an issue for a lot of people, and we've talked about issuing licenses for retail businesses such as hotels, yoga studios, spas, et cetera. But also, onsite consumption is going to be very, a very big part of events and tourism. And West Hollywood is notoriously a tourist city. We have lots of tourists come from all over the world who are also going to be looking for a safe place to consume cannabis. So to that end, myself and a very small group of industry experts are working together with the Bureau of Cannabis Control and Lori Ajax to create a new license. We are working to create a state license for events and tourism that would encapsulate an event producer or a tourist company to be able to get a license to have onsite sale in the confines of their event and tours, onsite consumption also in the confines, and transportation because you'll be moving people around. We've already had lengthy discussions with the state. They are on board with this, and that also, as it relates to hotels and things like that, they want to have events. And so they want to not only get a retail license, excuse me, an onsite consumption license, but if we, as event producers, can come and say, hey, we've got a state license, and then just be able to pull our local city permits, that's what we're really looking for right now. Because this, we, there's been a projection of $25 billion of revenue coming in from tourism in the cannabis industry, so it's much even, even much larger than cannabis itself. So I just want to let you guys know that we're working closely with the state to make that happen, and that's also going to trickle down into onsite consumption. So thank you so much for all your time.
Thank you. Dani Shaker, to be followed by Gilbert Mora.
Good evening, city council, staff. Hi, Lindsay. My name is Dani Shaker. I'm with Cannabis of Los Angeles, a fully vertically-integrated incubator. I also sit on the City of Los Angeles Cannabis Working Group. We just put out our first draft regulations in a 60-day comment period. I also wanted to speak about banking and onsite consumption. Banking is still a real issue. We have dispensaries grossing upwards of $1 million a month in cash, and that's set to double or triple when adult use rolls out. We've got employees that their sole job is to drive around with tens of thousands of dollars on a daily basis, trying to get money orders and cashier's checks to pay for basic utility bills. In regards to onsite consumption, as we know, city of West Hollywood is a destination city for tourism, and if there is no onsite consumption, we will have people lighting up on the streets left and right. I think that's a serious issue that we should talk about. Thank you.
Thank you. Gilbert Mora, Gilbert Mora, Steve Martin, Steve Martin, to be followed by Sheri Franklin.
Hey, Jean. Steve Martin, West Hollywood, getting my good side. Thank you for doing this. You know, this is really exciting. I came down here. I was not disappointed. This is a really good program, and you guys are off and running. You know, California is going to be the largest economy with, of legalized cannabis, and you guys are in the forefront of it. You guys have a lot of work to do to meet a deadline of January 1st, and I think you may have to clear some of your, the deck to do things like we're doing now to make sure that we get where we want to get and have a model ordinance. I agree completely with John D'Amico, the idea that we may be able to get great testing jobs here in West Hollywood. We may have to give them some breaks. Maybe we just give them parking breaks. But the fact of the matter is, these are good, middle-class-paying jobs for people who have education, and they're actually doing God's work. I mean, this is where the bottleneck is in the industry, and this is where we can be needed. I think there should be home delivery. I think it should be hooked to Pink Dot and Grubhub, so that way you can get your pizza and Doritos at the same time you can get your marijuana. I also think that we've, we've had some limited experience with onsite consumption for those of us who were here in the '70s at the Blue Parrot. But, you know, it's really important, and it's not just for tourists. It's for people who have spouses or roommates who you just can't be smoking in your, in your place because the other person has to get work done. They can, they can walk to a local place and hang out with friends, and it can be a really great community-building place to hang out. But more importantly, I think Lindsay was really good on banking. In my business, I'm, I'm doing family law and trying to establish a child and spouse support order off a cash business, and many times it has been cannabis dispensaries. It's really difficult. But if the city of West Hollywood could figure out a way to, I don't want to say we're in the money laundering business, and we're not in the banking business, but we could be in the processing business of collecting all the cash that comes in in West Hollywood, and making sure people's taxes are paid, and making sure that people's employees, federal, federal and state taxes are being paid. And that would do a huge service for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Sheri Franklin, to be followed by Barry Kramer.
Good evening. My name is Sheri Franklin with Think and Grow Lab. We're an accelerator hub in the La Crete Innovation Center in Los Angeles, created by myself and Mr. Dani Shaker. And we're working with industry leaders like Cat Packer to make sure that we have opportunities to train people. There's going to be great opportunities for people to learn all aspects of this business. Also, we're promoting innovation as cities. You know that if you do elect to have cultivation and manufacturing, they create, they have a great need for electrical use. They use water. There's opportunity to look at gray water programs. There's opportunities to look at the end product that can come after products are manufactured. Perhaps it could be turned into bricks or some type of alternative fuel. So we're looking for partners with city departments and agencies. We're very fortunate to be in the La Crete Innovation Center because that's a partnership in the city of LA between the Department of Water and Power and Sanitation. And there, we're able to work with some of the brightest minds to look at alternative uses. You know, we have, the law requires that you look at sustainable packaging. Perhaps that's something that we can partner with you here in West Hollywood to do. And regarding the banking, Dani mentioned the, the issue. We, we're very concerned there. We're looking at creating a credit union, and a credit union that can bank the non, non-cannabis businesses as well as cannabis business. But we need to start now and be leaders in that field, and we would love to be able to work with cities such as yourself to do so. Thank you.
Thank you. Barry Kramer, to be followed by Tom DeMille.
Hello, council. My name is Barry Kramer. I am a 27-year resident of West Hollywood. I was an operator of a medical marijuana dispensary in Los Angeles, just down the street from City Hall on Sweets or Melrose for eight years, and served the community of WeHo as best I could because it was locked out as far as any other businesses opening up. I am so proud of West Hollywood tonight. I am so proud of West Hollywood tonight. I've spent most of my advocacy with the city of Los Angeles and Sacramento, and it's been so difficult to even get the attention of those lawmakers. And to see your grasp of this issue and the way that you're dealing with it, I'm thrilled. I wanted to bring up one issue you have in licensing. Tonight, we're talking about licensing and zoning, and the issue is a waiting list that you created. I think it was after the inception of the second update to the ordinance, the medical marijuana ordinance. You implemented a waiting list. I would just like to possibly put in your ear that that waiting list should maybe be part of what the Rubicon is, Mayor Protem, the scoring, that those people have been waiting for spots to open up in West Hollywood. I'm one of them, and so I have been waiting very patiently. I would really like to operate within the city that I live in and have loved living in, and I think that should be given some consideration. So thank you very much. This has been a really wonderful evening, and I hope you do more of them.
Thank you. Tom DeMille. Tom, are you still here? Hal Lewis. Hal Lewis to be followed by Talissa Urias.
Hi there. I'm Hal Lewis, owner of Leaf of Life Wellness, topical company and terpene confection company, which we deal with terpenes. I love the city of West Hollywood. Tonight was great. Thank you for putting it on first and foremost, and thank you for the panel that came out here for it. I want to tell you, I do agree with merit-based licensing. Merit-based licensing is very important. The lottery system doesn't work. We've proven that in this area for many years now. Labs, more labs are definitely needed. That's going to be one of the prerequisites for a product to get out there. I would actually look at an emergency licensing for labs in the city here, so that way, if a product comes in, it's tested. Public consumption lounges, I definitely agree with. Now, I have notes on delivery. Delivery is definitely needed for consumers who cannot get out of their house. I mean, we deal with patients as young as six months old to 96, who are real medical patients, and I thank the city for taking a look at that for delivery services. Manufacturing, there's two types of manufacturing. There's the oil refinery, as I call it, which is the refining of the plant, taking out the oils versus manufacturing of infusion, infusion like topicals, or lozenges, or tinctures that we do. We don't do anything explosive. We just put in the cannabis plant into our topicals and get them out to people. And then, consumption lounges, again, very, very important for the consumers who cannot consume at home. There's many apartment buildings that will not allow you to smoke in your residence. This is one reason that I think I don't want to see people out on the streets partaking. I'd rather see them in a lounge somewhere, socializing, not hiding behind a tree. Thank you for letting me talk, and thank you for the panel for having this.
Thank you, Hal. Talissa Urias to be followed by Trey King.
I'm horrible at public speaking, so I brought a note. My name is Talissa Urias. I am the owner of LA420 Tours, a unique cannabis business. This cannabis business does not profit off of cannabis. Instead, we offer a safe, friendly sanctuary to enjoy cannabis and learn and engage in cannabis culture. We believe we are doing the best in cannabis industry for all of California communities, keeping people off of the streets and into a safe place to smoke and enjoy cannabis culture. Today, we are asking, we are here, hopes, in grants, sorry, of a permit to operate in West Hollywood. We've been there before. We were asked to not be there because of the laws that have not been regulated there. I would just like to get a business plan going to get a cannabis bus available in West Hollywood. Thank you.
Thank you. Trey King to be followed by Will Wick.
Hi, Trey King here, patient advocate and longtime resident of West Hollywood. I'm going to read through this, so forgive me for not looking you in the eye when I do this. I want to get through it quick. Merit-based, absolutely. Lottery does not work. Manufacturing, I dropped off with LA County Fire and LA County Sheriff, local here, the same packet that I dropped off for you guys a couple of months ago. So they've been on board since last fall, so they know what's going on. What's going to happen is fire safety will be the lead on that. In manufacturing, they're worried about compressed gas. That is going to be a huge issue. It'll have to be OSHA standards, it will be California standards. California standards will be more strict than Colorado, so we're good in that respect. Engineering standards will have to be met. And before a final open door, the local fire captain will have to inspect and sign off for every facility that will be opening. Ms., Mr., no tax. You were mentioning tax. There's no tax on medical. It will be an excise tax on people who are selling it, but you can tax delivery. That will be allowable. Banking, banking, they mentioned the credit union. Yes, there are a couple of credit unions that are out there right now, but there are also a few startups who are dealing with digital coins, like Bitcoins, and they will also have a vetting process, like where they check watch lists, because the Bureau wants all marijuana and cannabis to come off of the black market. So some of these banking startups are starting this, so that they will be able to check who is in the patient and conduct business and know that it is not black market money that is coming through. So those are out there, if you want to look into those. Distribution in dispensary, they were going to be separate, but in the governor's trailer bill he signed, they're now together. So recreational and medical can be sold together now. There'd just be a tax issue on that. And I think that's it, yes. And fees, low fees, bring business in. Thank you.
Thank you. Will Wick to be followed by Amber Lane.
Thank you, mayor, and council members.
Will, will you walk into the light, please?
I'm prettier in the dark, so.
I think our TV audience wants to see you.
Okay. Thank you very much, mayor, and council members for putting this on. I'm very excited about this industry, and I just wanted to say I agree with Adam Gilman, Adam Gilman, who said that the city has an opportunity to host a lot of manufacturing companies that are going to be producing edibles. One point, I heard the comment saying, well, we have until January 1st to get our laws in place. I'm personally going after a medical license to produce edibles for patients that are going through chemo. Now, the only way the state will take a look at my application, starting January 1, is if I have a local license. So there are companies like mine that are going to be at a disadvantage at the state level, trying to get that license to be in full compliance, if the city doesn't have some kind of plan where we can get our licenses prior to the January 1 date. So I'm just asking, is there a workaround that companies like my own can work with the city? That's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Amber Lane to be followed by Ruben Jimenez.
Am I in the light? Hi, Lindsay. Hi, thank you all for being here and listening to us. I'm Amber Lane, and I'm a five-year resident of West Hollywood. And I'm such a proud resident, because I think that we, like, West Hollywood sets such a great example in all sorts of lifestyles. We're very accepting, and we lead the nation in a lot of ways. So I think that medically and recreationally, and in terms of nightlife, to have a safe place for residents and tourists to go to, to be off the streets, and again, not in apartment buildings disturbing other residents, if we can find a way to work together and set an innovative precedent for cannabis use, it would be amazing. And again, thank you so much for everything. So, thank you.
Thank you. Ruben Jimenez to be followed by Daniel Fields.
My name's Ruben Jimenez. I am a Florida transplant. I apologize on behalf of the state. Yeah, my father came here, he sought political refuge from a communist country, Cuba, and I came to California for opportunity. And it really just sucks when opportunity gets taken away, opportunity for the city and state to make money. I'm not going to base it off fact, because we all have our facts, and we also thank you guys for telling us your facts. But also just observation, it gives people a safe place to smoke cannabis, and also it's going to keep people off the street. Observations, when walking down the road, I don't see people puking from marijuana. I also noticed that when people associate themselves with cannabis, they know their habit well, and it's usually not an over-intoxication state that causes violence. And also, to keep the violence separate from other people that are out on the streets, that are doing it for the wrong reasons, maybe for some money-making on the side, not for the city, then it gives us a safe place to go and smoke. I myself smoke cannabis, a lot of people do. I also see that the numbers show, the people that are standing up for what they believe in are the cannabis smokers or suppliers, and the people that are not here are the people that stand against. But if you stand against, just because you don't do something, does that really make a difference? Would gay people be allowed to get married if people said, well, I'm not gay, so why should I go and stand up for that? We stand in a beautiful time where our rights will be taken away if you don't pay attention. And I believe that we should all stand together to support something that only promotes love, wellness, and a better future. Thank you.
Thank you. Daniel Fields to be followed by Amanda Hyde. Daniel Fields. There you are. And then Amanda Hyde and Larry Block.
How's it going, everybody? It's my first time doing anything like this, so I got a couple of points I'm going to talk about, try to get through it really quick. I'm not from West Hollywood. I live out in Orange County. I'm from Detroit, and I've got a radio station in Compton. So I'm kind of all over the place, and I'm seeing things from a lot of different perspectives. I've got a radio station in Compton, it's called Tea Time. Basically, what our mission is, is to normalize the conversation around cannabis and things like that, but it's also mainly to bring information like this about cannabis industry, cannabis business, the medical uses, to the inner city, to the minorities, people who are hurt the most by the war on drugs and things like that. So I want to see a lot more, you know, things like dispensaries and lounges and bars, but I would like to see a lot more of these businesses in these areas that would need more work, need more money coming in. Also, I saw, I was doing some research, Vegas has just legalized recreational use, and they're using the taxes and things for schools and rainy day funds. So I don't know what it is like out here in West Hollywood, but there's a lot of schools that are closed down in Detroit, a lot of schools. So I know if something like that, we got the chance for something like this to happen in Detroit, I know it would change everything over there, the amount of jobs, the amount of money that were coming from taxes. So I don't know what you guys are going through, but I'm sure it could do a lot. When it comes to the lounges and stuff like that, I definitely want to see a lot more things like partition tour buses and things like that. There's already party buses where you can go and have a drink and hang out in the back of a bus that's partitioned. Things like a bus where you can go and tour around with your friends and things like that. Safety for drivers. You guys already know a lot about this stuff, I'm just kind of reinforcing the ideas. It was something I really wanted to touch on. Basically, just more of this stuff in the industry going to the communities that are really needed, and not going to the places that already have it. So that's where I'm coming from. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Great job on your first time. Amanda Hyde to be followed by Larry Block, and that's our last speaker.
Hi, I'm Amanda Smash Hyde. This is not my first time. I am the founder of the Cannabis Education Forum. We're about to enter into our third year, and this event happens because of the city of West Hollywood. I was waiting to construct a lot of our programming until we had today's event. So what I'm asking from you is, if there's information that, I kind of have a rough draft of where we're headed, but if there's something in particular that council, the city staff, the community wants to hear about, let's continue this conversation a month-ish from now. That's what my goal is. So if you have input, you can email me at cannabiseducationforum@gmail.com. I know that's really hard. Cannabiseducationforum@gmail.com, or just look at Amanda Smash Hyde. I'm pretty easy to find. So I'm looking forward to hearing from you, and I'm looking forward to seeing you August 26th, all day, talking about cannabis. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Amanda. And Larry Block, our final speaker. Thank you, Larry. Ms. Hyde, please watch your language.
Larry Block, West Hollywood. No matter what we do here, there's going to be an adequate supply to fill the need that goes on. So limiting regulation, I can't see that. West Hollywood's always been at the forefront of this, and thanks to a lot of work from John Duran in the early days, and we should continue at the forefront to be able to invite companies, like I believe Medbox, the vending machine, used to be located in West Hollywood, but they're now in Wilshire Boulevard. And this is a multi-billion-dollar industry that's going on. But the one thing that I didn't hear the whole night is, no matter what opportunities arise, landlords don't let pot facilities in their businesses, or they don't want to rent to them. They won't rent to it at the Huxley next to Trader Joe's, and the space is not available. And there's a limited space available for these type of businesses to go. So unless you really allow home delivery, or in a mixed-use development on the second floor, there'll be such a tight space on the ground level for storefronts, that it'll push any other retailer out of business. Because this is a high-ticket item, you could do $1 million a month, the guy said, and there won't be any room for a yogurt stop. We need to let it go, and we need to make sure we keep it tight at the same time. And the other thing is, medical dispensaries, sometimes it's limited, I did some research, between the quantity, and if you're over an ounce, say, you can buy that at a medical dispensary. But if you're recreational use, you can do that only up to an ounce. So certain businesses would be allowed limited use of recreational marijuana, cannabis products, and others would be limited by what they can sell, an ounce or more, say. And it would be cool if you could go into the, okay, sorry about that. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. I know that we are substantially over the time we allotted for tonight's meeting. I think staff needs some general guidance from us, and I see our city manager about to jump in. My understanding is that staff needs some guidance as to, number one, do we want to allow cannabis sales in the city of West Hollywood? If so, do we want to have a free-market approach? Do we want to have an approach that works on zoning? Or do we want an approach that tries to have some kind of merit-based system? So those are two of the questions we need to answer right off the top of the bat, and after we answer those, then we could talk a little bit more about particular types of uses that we may or may not want to consider. Lauren?
That is all correct. There was an additional question staff would like direction on tonight, if you're prepared in that, is if you're interested in allowing onsite consumption, because that's another big topic.
That's part of, let's get the first two questions answered. Number one, are we, I'm guessing that most of us are supportive of allowing use and the sale, right, okay. I'm not hearing any objection to that. I think that was a given. The second question is, how are we going to go about doing it? And I think we had some strong comments from our panelists that we shouldn't do a lottery. They didn't recommend a lottery, they recommended, for the most part, a merit-based system. Is that where we're heading?
That's where I would head. I would go with merit-based and zoning.
Okay.
I agree. I think it needs to be a merit-based system, and I think, just because, I want to just know the process part, I think there are seven different licenses, and maybe it's too quick to say zoning applies to all of them, or applies to none of them. So I think, in part, I agree that zoning is perhaps appropriate for cultivation, or whatever, but maybe not so appropriate for dispensaries, maybe those are better business licenses. But I think generally, if we could direct the staff to make some recommendations about the seven categories of licensure, and whether it's better to be a zoning or a business license, and then how those would be meted out, either by a license, and then how those would be meted out either by a system of merit-based or a system of CUPs zoning, then I think that would be the sort of thing I would like to see from the staff. With respect to use, I think you're correct, Mayor, that we all want to see use and then what the merit categories are, security, diversity, I can't even read my own writing, population to serve, et cetera. Would you want to have a list of those as well?
You're right, I don't want to call on you.
I've never done that before, because I have a lot of opinions.
But can you answer a question?
I'll do my best, but...
I didn't hear any objection to us allowing for adult use. I think that's a given.
Support.
In terms of how to go about allowing it in the city, are you in favor of a merit-based system?
Support.
Support, okay. That's, that's the sort of generalities that staff wants today. We don't need to get into the details tonight, from my understanding. So then, within the different types of uses that there could be, there could be sort of a retail dispensary. You're raising one other issue, which is onsite consumption, the lounge. Is that something that we're open to here? And you need some general guidance on that.
Correct. That's one additional category that staff could start exploring if you're interested in that.
Okay.
Support.
Support?
Support.
Interested.
Okay, so I think everyone is interested in that? And then, the other issue that was raised is the issue of delivery. And do you need some guidance on that?
That one, I actually have some opinion about.
Me too.
That one, that category, I have some opinion about.
I do as well.
Because it's somewhat convoluted and not as crystal clear as the others.
All right, so that's something that we probably need some follow-up discussion and we need some additional information.
And may I ask staff to look at parking impacts, the fast, parking impacts on distribution? The fact that we're a pass-through city, that a lot of cars and vehicles pass through our city and how we are going to possibly enforce this. Avoiding random stops of people that we believe are engaged in this industry and attempting to, to figure out whether we can limit distribution and delivery to just our licensed operators or whether because it's intra-city commerce, we're not able to do that. And if we're not able to do that, then what's our next best alternatives?
Correct.
All right. So from a staff perspective and a city attorney perspective, did you get as much guidance as you need tonight?
I just, I have two more things.
Oh, yes, so we can add things, but I want to make sure we got staff what they needed tonight.
Thank you.
I think Lindsay has stuff too.
Okay.
Just two more things. There's a lot of moving parts happening right now at the current time. And I think it's important that Mr. Molina and Helene Mashar add to their workload, if they haven't already, what's happening in Sacramento and in Washington DC. There was some reference tonight to the Cole model. I didn't even know what the gentleman from Colorado was talking about, the Cole memo. Have no idea who Cole is or what the memo is, but it seemed to be important to him. I think that we need to figure out who the US Attorney...
He's still here, we can ask him.
I'll ask him privately. I don't want, I don't want to...
The Attorney General memo, I think he's referring to.
I want to figure out who the US Attorney is going to be for the Trump administration for Los Angeles and figure out what inroads we may, need to make to her or to him, because the US Attorney for Los Angeles County is going to be critical on the avoidance of federal prosecutions. I want to figure out if Roebuck or Farr is being included in the federal budget. In the past, it has been. I don't know if it's in the current federal budget or if there's talk about it. I also want to monitor the issue around Sacramento, trying to prohibit or limit goods and services in terms of their state licensing, because I think that would be problematic for us. I don't think we want to limit goods or services. So I just think we need to more broadly monitor state and federal and also figure out, because we're a contract city and we contract with Sheriff and Fire, are we going to have to have any issues with county government? So we've got all these levels of government that I think we need to monitor. Finally, on the last issue, and then I'm going to be quiet, John, I promise, is the issue of Prop 218 and tax. Proposition 218 requires that any tax be put to a vote of the people. That would include a tax on cannabis. However, I think that in the past, we've been creative around issues ranging from billboards to new development, in terms of development agreements and other, other possible fee-generating income to the city. I think whoever these operators are going to be, the 10 or 15 or 20, whoever they're going to be, they're given the golden ticket, like in Willy Wonka. You get the golden ticket, right? And at the same time, we need to make sure that there is a public benefit back to our city, back to our community. And the best way to measure public benefit is in terms of the finances and resources so that we can target some of it towards drug addiction, alcoholism, homelessness, and the other social ills that come out of the abuse of marijuana. So, and now I'll be quiet.
Well, and I think we have to be careful of that because that creates a special tax. So, yeah.
Sure. So I just wanted to pick up on where John left off, because I think we are, in fact, delivering an extraordinary amount of potential revenue and capital development for the people who end up with these licenses, whatever, however they might be. So I think we need to use a merit-based system that, that looks at the cost to the community and then the benefit to the community, as John said, like perhaps our development agreements or a cost analysis for public safety and other public services. I just think that's the, that's the sort of next smart, smart move. I also, I want us to go on the record tonight before we close this session about our absolute timeline. I think we have to, we have to be aware that we have potentially one, maybe two meetings in September, two meetings, potentially one meeting in October, one meeting in November, and one meeting in December, and one meeting potentially two in August. So we have maybe eight, possibly five or four meetings, after which staff will have developed a body of information that we can discuss. And then we have to have this reading and that reading and those readings and the final reading. And so I think, I would just like us to go on the record, everyone here, everyone who paid, paid, paid attention, that we're going to be doing this quickly and we're going to be delivering this fast. And people need to get us the information they want us to consider when making these decisions quickly. So I don't know if you want to do that now, but I think maybe now would be the time.
And tonight, the council really gave us a big jump forward. So I think we can do the additional resource. We have the team in place. We're going to take the show on the road and do a little bit more outreach. We're looking at coming to council, we're looking at the Planning Commission, let's look at these dates here. You could read that better than I can. So while they're, while they're looking at the dates, I wanted to ask a question. So did you want us to come back to the council before we go to the Planning Commission? Because this will have to go to the Planning Commission and the, for zoning ordinance changes, or did you want us to come to you and then go back to Planning Commission?
I think some of these are policy decisions that have to be made at the council level.
Agreed.
Agreed.
So the draft schedule that, that we have come up with is a first reading on the cannabis ordinance, November 6th, second reading, November 20th or December 4th, depending on your meeting agenda, and that would get your ordinance adopted in time.
And will that give the Planning Commission time to adopt any zoning regulations?
Yes, so that would mean the ordinance would go to Planning Commission, second meeting in September. It would also go to the Business License Commission in September and then come to you in November.
Can we add public safety? I mean, hate to give it three commissions, but can we add the Public Safety Commission analysis?
But that means that for some of these policy questions, you're going to have to come to us before you bring that to those bodies, unless there's a way to do things simultaneously.
Right, that's, that's what I heard you saying, that you want us to come back first to get some policy direction, then we go to Planning Commission for the zoning ordinance change, then has to come back for you for final action. And the same with Business License Commission for any changes to the business license code. So what you, you've asked us to teach tonight is pretty specific. There were some general questions that were related to some of the activities. We'll bring an item back at the second meeting in August, even if we do it as a, an update. Again, I think to me, the, the big questions were related to consumption and to delivery services. A lot of the other issues in terms of crafting the ordinance, the direction was pretty clear to us. So we'll come back with an update in the summer.
But we're still up in the air about delivery and how that's going to work, so...
That'll be one of the items we come back to you on.
So I just had a couple more things to finish. This is about the schedule, then?
Yes, yes, and then I'll check where our other...
So I'm not here on November 20th. As long as I've been on this council, we've canceled that meeting the week of Thanksgiving. So I planned that we wouldn't be, so maybe we can do it December 6th or whenever that is. So the last two things I want to say with respect to that schedule is, I think we heard pretty clearly that if we are interested as a council in having licensing businesses, that they need to be up and running by January 1st, so that, they could be up and running by January 1st, so they could be product testing. So I, I just wanted to potentially put out that maybe the council would want to go out on a limb and say, "We would want to have testing businesses," since they're neither onsite use nor sale nor manufacturing, but simply testing, and we could perhaps ask the, to have a, something put in place. I don't know if there's support for that, but in, in my mind, if we want to be a city that can, we help brand the testing of the products, can be a healthy city in which we produce healthy products, that sort of thing. And then finally, the last two things I want to, I would like to be on the record about is I support manufacturing infusions but not extractions. I think, I would like us to be really clear about the extraction piece of manufacturing and have in our staff report, a report from the Fire Department about extractions in an urban area as dense as ours. So if you could please make that part of the record, and if they support it and believe that we can produce that safely, then I would perhaps change my mind, but I just sort of see this as happening more in a warehouse next to the airport than, you know, next to the Target, for example.
And maybe we need to know more about the different extraction techniques, because some may be more dangerous than others.
That's exactly right.
Could I just say one thing about the timing? I think we have to have our ordinance in place by the end of the year, but we don't have to have issued our licenses. The state doesn't want to issue any licenses if they violate our code. So we want to get our code to the state before they start, saying, "We're going to allow this activity, but we're not going to allow that activity." They'll issue the state licenses and then those businesses can come to West Hollywood and get their business, their licenses.
What I heard from one of the speakers is they can't issue, the state can't issue licenses until they have a local license to apply to the state.
Then that just means they can't get their license on January 1 at the state, but we, we can get our program in place.
No, they can't. People who are applying for a license...
Excuse me, people, please.
People who, I heard you, I got you. The people who are applying for state licenses need to have their local license in place before they can apply to the state. So if all you're saying is the state needs to know what our policy is, they will know that, but they will not know whether we've licensed a business.
That, that's correct. The proposition said state licenses won't be issued if they violate a local law. So that's why the state needs to know what our local law is before they issue. As these agencies start issuing their regulations, that might be in their regulations, but that wasn't in the proposition that was passed. So we can look into that if, if the licensing agencies are starting to say, "No, we need to see your local license before we'll give you something."
So I reflect the comment that was made, if the licenses are, be, starting to be issued Jan. 1, what we're saying is, we won't be ready for the state to issue licenses to our businesses Jan. 1, because our policy won't be in place until Jan. 1. So, so I'm, I'm clear about what the timeline is for everyone, and I just think, given the time that we have now, I'm not sure that we'll be able to speed that up any, any further. I don't know if the state allows for, I know somebody asked if there was a workaround. I, I don't think that there's anything allowed for that, but I'm, I'm happy to understand if, if, you know, I'm happy to hear if there's some sort of workaround to that process. But I think timeline-wise, what we're saying to the community is, we're not going to be ready to issue a license until Jan. 1, 2018.
And the state is working on its regulations, so they're also under the same time crunch.
Councilmember Meister?
I'm just...
Oh, are you, oh, do you have, okay.
Be fast. So my priority in this whole conversation, I want to thank everybody who participated in it, because it is sort of a new frontier, is safety. And that means a lot of different things for me. You know, yes, there's the security cameras aspect, the background checks aspect, and all of that's very important to me. Yes, yes, this was passed, proposition, the proposition was passed, but there were people who voted no and they also live in our community, and we have to make sure that everyone is safe through this whole process. And, and that we're doing this in a responsible way. And I think what I heard from everyone here is that that's what everyone who wants this to happen wants it to be responsible to. So I don't think that's a bad thing to be a goal. I'm very interested in the banking systems that take cash out of these businesses and, and allow for other types of monetary exchanges for these businesses. So if there's a role that the city can play in helping to create that opportunity for businesses to bank, I would like us to be a part of that. I'm interested in safety from the aspect of labeling and making sure we understand what's in these products, that people understand what they're consuming and what they're using and what the dosage is and what the impact might be for them. I'm interested in safety from an enforcement perspective. When we have these regulations, is it something we're going to rely exclusively on code enforcement, on the Sheriff's Department? Who's going to be responsible for what? And are we going to make sure we have the people in place we need to make sure that everything is enforced so we are keeping people safe? I'm interested in the kind of advertising we're going to allow and not allow. I know that that's a conversation that's happening at the state level, but I think we should have it here locally too. I don't want advertising targeting people who shouldn't be having it. I think in some ways, I liken this, I liken the experience of cannabis to smoking in that there are a lot of people who don't want to be around, who don't want to inhale second-hand smoke. I understand there's all kinds of science about why it's not like cigarettes, but people still don't want to smell it. So we need to have a conversation about how we're regulating, regulating the experience of smoking this. And finally, I am very supportive of testing, because I think it helps contribute to the conversation about safety. Secondly, I'm very concerned about this issue from a social justice perspective. And while I think all of our speakers tonight were extraordinary, I want to particularly thank Kat for her leadership and the way that she's been handling this conversation from a social justice perspective. I think that's reflective of our community's values. And finally, I am very supportive of the conversation around manufacturing. I know this is a conversation that actually happened in Santa Monica, and while, yes, they are a bigger city than, than ours, they took up this conversation for some of the very reasons that were mentioned tonight. So I want to make sure that we understand what the impact could be and, you know, yes, we can get recommendations one way or another, but I want to have an understanding of that. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Meister.
Yeah, I just wanted to ask Lauren to look into the legality of a local preference program.
All right. So I wanted to just close with one thought, and I, I know that we're all committed to this January 1 deadline, and I know that there are some proposed operators who are concerned that we meet that deadline. But from my standpoint, and I think from all of our standpoints, we want to make sure that we craft an ordinance that is a model ordinance, that is really one that works for the West Hollywood community, one that attracts the, the best caliber operators here, whether it be retail stores, onsite consumption, testing labs, or anything else, we want to make sure that our community is served with the very best quality. And tonight's presentation and all the work that has been done has been extremely helpful. Lauren, again, thank you for your efforts in shepherding this. Thank you to our visitors who came tonight. Thank you to staff who helped us all, and thank you to everyone here in the audience for sharing your concerns and comments. We've got a lot of work to do, but I know that we're going to get it done. So thank you again. We are now adjourned to our regular meeting. Mr.? The 13th?
A special meeting on the 17th at 6:00 PM.
Oh, it's a special meeting.
We'll have a study session to talk about the community development department's work plan.
Oh, that, okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, may, may I ask a public request that we fix the lights? I'm not sure what's up, but they're super hot and super misfocused. Thank you.
Councilmember Meek?
Yes.
There were, there's extra lighting for tonight.
Oh.
Because of using there.
Got it.
I just thought...
No, it's up here, though. I don't know.
I don't know. But every time I was sitting there, it was like--